Begin the meeting. This planning commission meeting is now called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and potus stood in compliance with the open meeting law. We are live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 AM, and Thursday at 6:00 PM. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge?
I pleasantly take this to the flag. The United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do our traditional roll call, we have our newest member, but certainly not our least experienced member in attendance, Michael Buckley. I'd like to just give a minute to Michael to give him the opportunity to introduce himself to the audience and refresh the staff as to his background.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Buckley. I was served on the planning commission, hard to believe, almost seven years ago is when I came off. I did serve in different times, from 1994 to 2002, and it was an exciting time in my life, and to see how, because being, I'm a real estate lawyer, and I often thought that being on the planning commission was really to see where the action was. And being a real estate lawyer now, this is about the only action, I think. But I was given the opportunity to be a commissioner for a temporary period of time, an interim period, by Councilman Steiman, and look forward to being here for the next five months or so.
Well, welcome on board, and we appreciate your expertise you bring with you. And on the other end, we have our shortest honorary member. Mr. Goins, would you care to introduce the gentleman to your right?
Yes, as duty calls sometime in my life, I have with me this evening my son Joshua Anthony Goins, who will be visiting with us for about an hour and a half. Stand up, Joshua. Want to say hello to everybody? Thank you.
Welcome to you too, Joshua. Now, I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Chair Throbridge.
Present.
Vice Chair Thrusdale.
Present.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Buckley.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Goins.
Present.
And Commissioner Asworth. Excuse us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if applicable. Please read them carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so that we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Okay. There is a motion to approve the minutes of December 18th planning commission meeting?
Commissioner, I'll be abstaining from that. I was not at that meeting.
Motion for approval of the minutes?
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Motion carries with two abstentions due to nonparticipation in those meetings. Item number five, let's move to the housekeeping items. Are there any items the commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward?
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Items number 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22, the applicant has requested that these items be held in abeyance to the February 12, 2009, planning commission meeting. Items number 27 and 28, the applicant has requested that these items be held in the abeyance to the February 26, 2009, planning commission meeting. Item number 33, the applicant requests that this item be withdrawn without prejudice. Items number 36, 37, 38, 39, and 40, the applicant has requested that these items be held in abeyance to the February 26, 2009, planning commission. Items number 41, 42, 43, 44, and 45, the applicants have requested that these items be held in abeyance to the February 12, 2009, planning commission meeting. Item number 55, the applicant has requested this item be held in abeyance to the February 26, 2009, planning commission meeting. Staff has recommended that this item be heard. Item number 61, the applicant has requested this item be held in abeyance to the April 9, 2009, planning commission meeting. Thank you.
If I may, the reason for requesting that 55 be heard is that's a required review since that is a matter placed on the agenda based upon council action, that's why we would recommend it be heard.
Thank you. Is there a motion regarding the housekeeping items?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to bring those items forward and follow staff's recommendation.
Okay, so we'll hear item number 55?
With regard to item 55, I will abstain on that item because I have property directly across the street from that, so my motion would include item 55.
Mr. Goins, do you have a feeling towards item number 55?
We are going to hear it in its order, correct?
Yes, you would.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, then, motion's in order to, or has been made in regards to the agenda, subject to the, we have someone in attendance that wishes to speak on one of these items, please?
Ryan Arnold, 3225-BS South Rainbow, here on item 55. I have no problem if you guys obviously want to continue in hearing it. I just wanted to explain to the commission that I have not had a chance to file the application properly, and that's all I've asked for the abeyance for. I have a new site plan being drawn up, actually it was just finished today, and just wanted to do it properly, so when staff receives it, they have the proper information, and they can submit a full report to you with the updated information. That's all.
Thank you. And you, sir?
He's just visiting.
Okay. Based upon that input from the applicant, I think it's only fair that we allow them the opportunity to update the resume, so I would suggest that we also obey item number 55 till a later date forward.
I concur.
Be on the, February the 4th is when it'll be heard?
Thank you.
Okay, motion's been made, please cast your votes.
On item number 55, the request was to hold that item till February 26. I believe you indicated February 4th on the record.
If he has his information in, I think that should be fine.
There is no meeting on February 4th.
I'm sorry? What are we doing here?
February 12th would be the next planning commission.
I'm sorry?
I'm free on the 4th.
The issue for staff is if there's revised plans, we will have to have that ready to go by noon tomorrow.
Okay, I don't think we're going to make that, so the request was for the 24th?
26.
26, okay, let's, do we need to, let's see, we need to resend the action? Just make the correction, okay, we'll correct that and hold that item until the meeting of February 26th. Thank you very much. Okay, now let's move on. There are no consent items, so we can now go right to the one motion, one vote. The following items that may be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine, nonpublic, and public hearing items. All public hearings and nonpublic hearing items will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the planning commission, not in agreement with the staff conditions, and all the standard conditions for the application recommended by staff, should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item number one is TMP 32529, the village at Centennial Hills. Applicant owner is Hit W Douglas Family Trust for a two-lot commercial subdivision at the northwest corner of Deer Springs Way and Durango Drive. Item seven is RQR 31805. The applicant owner is Costa Enterprises, the Third LLC. It's required review for a 55-foot-tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 3700 East Charleston Boulevard. Item number eight is RQR 31822. The applicant owner is John P. and Sharon To Main Family Trust. Required review for a 40-foot-tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 3720 West Desert Inn Road. Number nine, RQR 31834. The applicant owner is Lee Dang Family Living Trust. It's required review for a 40-foot-tall, 14-by-8-foot off-premise sign at 2390 North Decatur Boulevard. Item number 10 is special use permit, 32530. The applicant is Clearwater US LLC. The owner is West Care Works, Inc., for a proposed 70-foot-high wireless communication facility, non-stealth design, at 401 South Martin Luther King Boulevard. Item 11 is site development review, 32475. The applicant owner is Coca-Cola Bottling Company. It's for a proposed 104, 517, 104,517 square-foot expansion of an existing 116,633 square-foot warehouse at 230 North Mojave Road. And item number 12 is site development review, 32544. The applicant owner is Cornerstone LLC. It's a major amendment to an approved site development plan reviewed, it's to add a pedestrian plaza with a waiver to the downtown Centennial Plan Streetscape standards at 123 East Charleston Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, staff would request that item number six, TMP 32529, be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in attendance that'd like to now declare the public hearing open for those items, with the exception of number six? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on any of those items? Seeing none, I'll declare the pub, C1, sir, please approach the mic. Which item would you like to speak in regards to, sir?
Number 12.
Thank you, just give us one minute and we'll be right to you.
Okay.
Do some procedural things. Okay, so we'll entertain them, the public hearing's been opened, no one wished to speak on the other items, with the exception of six and 12, so we'll entertain a motion regarding items number seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve items seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11, subject to all staff's conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post? Motion carries.
All matters go forward to the city council on February 18th.
Regards to item number six, staff want it pulled for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, staff notes that this application is being amended from a two-lot commercial subdivision to a one-lot commercial subdivision. Staff finds the proposed request as not having a substantial impact on the surrounding properties, and therefore is recommending approval. Please note revised materials are in your backup package. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on item number six?
Mr. Chairman, I will be abstaining on this item as my law firm has done legal work for the applicant.
Thank you, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, I am abstaining on this item as much as I have real estate agreements with this applicant.
You've got five in attendance and two abstentions? Could we rule on that?
I'm the owner-applicant, William Douglas Hit, and I'm here to answer any questions on our request with Derek Fetter, my engineer, if required.
Thank you. City attorney is, can three take action?
The unfortunate problem here is that four is a quorum for the planning commission, and so if there is not four to vote, then we're going to have to continue until we have four to vote.
Okay, well, I regret to inform you that we'll have to do this another day. If you, to save you a trip down, if you have any statements you'd like to get on the record, we can incorporate that into the record and not have to come again, we can reference it in the minutes.
Whatever the most efficient way to handle it with the city.
Staff recommendation is going to be for approval?
Staff recommendation is for approval of this item. If there's an abeyance to be held, we can hold this till February 12th.
Okay, and I'll, would it be, could I ask you if you were willing to accept all conditions that are submitted currently?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, then I think we'll schedule it for the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have four that are able to vote.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, then, no action can be taken on item number six due to a lack of a quorum, so now we can move to item number 12. Like to declare the public hearing open, sir, your position on number 12?
Mr. Chairman?
Where are we?
Oh, sir?
Oh, staff report, I'm sorry, I thought you'd already done it.
The proposed development is compatible and harmonious with the surrounding commercial properties, and is anticipated to provide an important pedestrian-only public plaza venue featuring public art, therefore staff is recommending approval. Please note additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Now declare the public hearing open, sir. Name for the record.
My name is Jack Solomon. I own or lease the property at 1 East Charleston, and also the adjoining property to, on Main Street. We objected to the site plan at the last meeting and at the city council meeting because there is a grab of Boulder Street, which was set aside to be a sculpture park. And as I understand what's going on, and I don't know exactly what's going on, the applicants want to get some free land.
Are you the applicant, sir?
No, I'm opposing the applicant.
The applicant is not here? Here? Okay. I think we need to let the applicant speak first. I thought you were the applicant.
No, I'm not.
Okay. Would the applicant care to come up and present his project briefly?
Good evening. Wes Miles is met on 107 East Charleston Boulevard. We are trying to build a pedestrian plaza as the application states. We have already received permission to do this. This is to get a design review to confirm the design of this pedestrian plaza. My dear neighbor here, I believe, is extremely confused on what is being done here, but the application is very straightforward. You see the designs for the plaza. In this hard times, it's kind of amazing that someone will step forward and do these types of things, but I have no understanding of their intention or desire. The idea of a land grab is not.
Okay, well, if you'll just stay with us, then I'll let this gentleman complete his presentation, and perhaps you can, at that point in time, make a response to his comments. Thank you. Sir, please continue.
My understanding is that they've asked the city to cede most of Boulder to themselves a private enterprise. For a long time, Boulder Street was set aside for a public use, a public sculpture park. I'm interested in developing the art part of the art district, and we have underway a possibility of a sculpture by a world-class artist who shows at the Louvre in Paris and so forth, to build a great sculpture on the land. When there is private land, it's almost impossible to get donations for individuals to give money for a sculpture that will be built on private enterprise, on private property. So I don't understand why the, why this is being ceded at this time. Moreover, we all had a meeting before I was taken, I've been away for quite a while because I've had a quadruple bypass when I was in Chicago. And just before I went, we all had a meeting with the mayor, and the mayor said, "Well, Wes and his partners, will you please present a plan and see if we can't work it out?" And we agreed, and I thought that Wes agreed. That plan has not been forthcoming. I don't really know what's being done. We weren't informed of it, except by notice that there's going to be a major amendment. So I'm against this being given to private property, and it will severely impat what was set aside for a sculpture garden, which will greatly enhance the entire neighborhood.
Thank you. Let me ask a question of staff. Was this property already vacated, was it? This action's already taken?
If I may, Bart Anderson, Public Works. The vacation of this portion of Boulder Avenue was approved by city council on June 4th of 2008, so the vacation itself is not a part of this action before you today. I would just say, though, that the vacation is only for the portion of Boulder east of First Street, not the portion west of First Street, which is my understanding of the location of the proposed sculpture garden.
Thank you.
Well, I think that there are conditions to the vacation.
And what conditions do you think are there?
Well, there has to be something that, what's being vacated will be a sculpture park, and will be open to the public.
Okay, well, wait, okay, sir, thank you. And your sponsor?
We are here today with a design review to put in that, exactly what you're asking for, and for some reason, Mr. Solomon, I cannot make you understand that we're here today to get a design review to do just that. And I know of no city plan or grant or gift from anyone planned that will come up with the dollars to replace ours to make this public plaza.
Okay, while we've got the DS, why don't you take about one minute and just show us your plan, and maybe we can get a vote? Well, we have one more gentleman wants to speak.
Yes.
Okay, let's, please.
Roger Drum, 3200 Beemery Court, North Las Vegas. I own the property at number 1 Charleston. And Mr. Solomon is correct, we did have meetings with the mayor and Mr. Reese, and it was, the vacation was contingent upon a submittal of a plan, but when the card comes out, to notify us that there's a meeting, a card comes out and says there's major modifications. Okay, so what do we, what do we have, what do we have to respond to, other than to say, "Well, we're opposed to major modifications, we want to see the plan"? So one of the conditions that was put on the previous plan was that they were to bring a plan up, and this could be, what he's doing now, is bringing this plan up, but he was supposed to submit it to everybody for review and acceptance, so it would kind of go through and be, and be accepted. And this is basically what you're going to see, is kind of what we had previously, previously discussed. But when the card comes out, it comes out and says, "There's going to be a major modification." It doesn't tell us anything. So Mr. Solomon is correct, Wes is probably correct, Mr. Solomon is correct, he's opposed to any vacation of that property for private use. And the, and previous meetings that we had with Mr. Reese and the mayor, is they are also opposed to a private use without making it a sculpture park. The intent was that that was to be a sculpture park all the way through, from one, from Main Street all the way through to the new casino center. So that's, that's kind of the intent, and that's what, that's what it looks like they're trying to do here. We did, we were unaware of what was transpiring. So I'm opposed to it right now, that, until I see it. I haven't seen it yet.
Okay, sir, neither have I in this final form, so that's what we can do right now. Would you please care to present your plan?
I'd like to make a statement first.
Please.
Over three years ago, the city of Las Vegas hired a landscape architect and a designer to design this sculpture park, and that architect, that landscape designer, is the exact same one here. And what Mr. Drum states is correct, is that the idea of being the part of the entire distance was absolutely true, and if it wasn't for Mr. Solomon and Mr. Drum here, that would have been the case. They are the ones who stopped it from going all the way through. They saw these plans three years ago and have changed it to this point, and we are, we have done, for several years now, tried to and will execute a sculpture park if you would merely allow us and stop getting in the way. The plan is this. The plaza itself, which is part of the Nusimrama grant funds, the 1.4 million for the Nusim Biways that was received about three years ago, and the conceptual design from the landscape architect was to use a paving stone, a 24, a 2.5-inch-thick, a 12-inch stone to make a, a, a design. And with leaving Boulder Avenue open at First Street here with ballers to control traffic because of their requests, we have stopped at that point, and then from east of there, we're using the same paving stones in a harmonious design to match the plaza. We are keeping the sidewalks in place to give more of a old-town, Main Street-type feeling. All the new plazas are flat, and if you are to walk, like on Main Street, at, like Disneyland, they actually have curbs and gutters, so it looks like an old street, it looks like an old part of town, but has the appropriate pedestrian. We'll have, we have done the studies and have shown them to this, this commission before on the fire access and the ballot system of how the emergency access will pass through in those types of events. We have been running the First Friday and, and events in the art district long before any of these people arrived. We have been doing it successfully for years. This is a natural growth of that. And I repeat, the reason that this came up in the beginning was because there's no public money to execute this, and we, as the property owners, have stepped to the plate to execute the original plan, with the exception of opening an area to allow access to Mr. Drum's building.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commission members for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Steve's not here, so.
No, no, no. I am going to vote on this, because I have voted on this action before, but I did look at this notice area, and it did, for some reason, the map encompasses an edge of a property. I have no economic benefit in this. But this project, we beat this thing to death, and with all due respect to Mr. Solomon and Wes, and we, I understand the confusion where if this, if this was noticed as a major modification, but as I see this, this plan is virtually what was originally submitted when we did all the other, I mean, because we beat the ballers to death, we beat, and I give everybody credit for sticking with the project. Is there some other, for staff, is there some other modification that is, is something different than what we have seen as it, as it came through before?
Pursuant to the staff report, if I may, the issue is the landscaping changes because of the utility easement issues, and also the emergency site access. There were two modifications that had to be made for circumstances frankly beyond the control of Wes, and therefore, because the, the changes were deemed to be significant, even though they were about easements and access, that's why the major modification is necessary, and this is cited in the site, in the staff report.
And these are the type of changes that every developer would, would experience as they got through final designs, and for public works, they, they find an easement that, that has an effect, aerial easement, something has to be moved. So while it says major, I think the intent is a very, in my opinion, modest change to the site plan. And, you know, I'd like to see this built for a change, you know, and I.
You and me both.
But if there, if there aren't objections, I would make a motion to support staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. I, we can now go back to item number six, we've had a reconsideration, and we, yes, we can now entertain a motion regarding item number six, which is a 10 map, 23529, the village at Centennial Hills. The applicant owner is Hit W Douglas Family Trust. Staff report, please. Just, we're repeating, it's already been given, you've already accepted the conditions?
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, Mr. Lo, Mr. Chairman. I have spoken with Commissioner Buckley again about his abstention, and he had indicated to me that it's been some time since his firm has done work for this applicant. I might ask the commission, the chairman, to ask the applicant how long that's been, if the applicant owes the commissioner if the applicant owes the commissioner's firm any money, uh, and, uh, let's see if, uh, we can't get, uh, Commissioner Buckley, uh, the ability to vote on this item.
Okay, so you heard the question that was being suggested that I asked, so consider it asked.
Uh, for the record, I, uh, have not, uh, had any, uh, business with, uh, Mr. Buckley's law firm for, I believe, about, uh, five years. I owe them no money, and, uh, I'm in good standing with them.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would then advise, uh, Commissioner Buckley that there is, there is no abstention required pursuant to NRS 281, and if he felt that he could vote, uh, and be impartial, then he should go ahead and vote.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Lewis, and, uh, with that, uh, I, I didn't really recall the specifics, but I appreciate that, and I do, uh, want to go ahead and vote.
Okay, motion's in order.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve item six, TMP 32529, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal.
Thank you.
Thank you for the reconsideration. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. We can now move to item number thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen as related items. General, thirteen is general plan amendment, um, 69877. The applicant owner is Carolyn Ahern. It's from PCD Plan Community Development to General Commercial on the east side of Oso Blanca Road, approximately 850 feet north of Kyle Canyon. I'll go ahead and read the rest of the items so we can address them all at the same time. Item fourteen is zoning 29878. It's from undeveloped, uh, PCD Plan Community Development, general plan designation, uh, to G2 General Commercial. Uh, item number fifteen is variance 29881, is to allow a 13-foot setback along the east property line where 20 feet is required. And item number sixteen is site development review, 29879, is for a 300, I mean, see, 3,400-square-foot convenience store and car wash with fuel pumps and two 3,010, one, 3,100-square-foot restaurants with drive-throughs with waivers of the perimeter landscape requirements to allow a six-foot buffer along the south and east property lines where eight feet is required, and a six-foot buffer along the west property line where 15 feet is required. Like to open or turn it to staff for comments?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the applicant has requested that the planning commission amend their applications to reflect a request to amend the general plan amendment to service commercial and the rezoning of the site to C1 Limited Commercial. Staff can, can support the requested amendments as the proposed general plan designations zoning district would be compatible with the surrounding area and therefore recommend approval of those two applications. Since the original submittal, the applicant has since revised the proposed development by combining two restaurant with drive-through buildings into one, in turn eliminating the need for a parking variance. However, the redesign of the site, of the site still requires waivers of both the building placement and landscape standards, as well as a variance for the rear yard setback requirement. As these design issues can be alleviated by means of alternate site design, staff has recommended denial of the variance as it has been deemed a self-imposed hardship, as well as the associated site development plan review. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to turn it over to application or applicant for com, for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners, Robert Rosebeck, 145 East Reno, on behalf of the applicant and owner.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to, uh, the issue on the variance and the, um, the landscape buffers, as you can see from the overhead, uh, the pieces, I think the mic is live in the middle, should pick me up?
Yes, it is.
As you can indicate here, we have requested, uh, you know, from eight foot to six foot per the ordinance, and then from thirteen, or from 20 foot to 13 here on the front edge of Oso Blanca. But you can see the site is very unique. This is not a typical building site. Um, it's, it's almost triangular in shape, and as indicated in the landscape, uh, plan, you know, the corners, we substantially, uh, you know, increased the landscaping requirement, and I think on balance, um, it certainly meets with the intent of the code. And with respect to the setback for the car wash, as you can see, it, it's a unique piece, again, how it cuts off here on that, uh, southeast side. It pushes it up literally, you know, close to the alignment for the right-of-way for 95. We don't think that that's going to have any negative impact upon anyone. And we think it's a, a purd use of the site, and we think that it makes sense. We worked on this project, uh, now, I think, since 1968, or thereabouts, but, and I say that in jest, we started in the county some time ago, and just, uh, for background, um, we originally did that, uh, made application in the county. At that time, as you all recall, the alignment issues had not been worked out with respect to the 95 Kyle Canyon interchange. That has since been identified, that alternative, um, ramp has been identified, and, so now we're back. And we actually went in, uh, and annexed into the city, uh, late last year, and, uh, we've worked very closely with Councilman Ross and his staff, as well as, uh, Mr. Rankin, and, um, we feel that this is a, an ideal site for the, you know, a location for this site and proposed uses. And as far as, uh, the elevations, I think you've got them in your backup, but in the event that you can't see them in color, um, this is a very attractive, uh, project. It, uh, ties in air tones, uh, in the area. And in fact, the, the typical comment we've received on the elevations is, "Is that really going to be a car wash?" Um, and again, we think it makes perfect sense, we think the variance is, is warranted, given the characteristics of the site. The only issue that, uh, that we have with respect to the conditions under the SDR and, and zoning for that matter is, um, a condition 22, um, and 24. And Mr. Anderson can address that, I, I, I trust?
Yeah, a, actually, I thought, uh, it was just 24, not 22.
I'm sorry, 24, you're correct.
In regards, the, uh, applicant has, uh, stated a concern, we, the condition currently says extend oversized public sewer from TP Lane to the north edge of this site in Oso Blanca Road to a depth and location acceptable to the Collection Systems Planning Section of the Department of Public Works. And he has, uh, stated a concern that, at the time of development, there may be a closer or more accessible sewer location, so they'd rather not be tied specifically to this location. And so I'm prepared to suggest we revise to put the, the words, "Unless otherwise allowed by the city engineer," right after what I just read in. And I think that should take care of the problem.
And, Mr. Chairman, that would certainly meet with our, our needs.
Thank you.
And I'd be happy to address any questions you may have with respect to the project or the elevations, and, uh, would ask for your favorable approval.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Um, first, excuse me, first, Mr. Chairman, first staff, and I know it's probably way out in the future, but do we have a, a layout of the Kyle Canyon, how it's proposed? The, the applicant said they moved this to, uh, be sensitive to-
The street?
No, the, the realignment of Kyle Canyon, I was just-
Mr. Chairman, maybe I can address this. Um, usually I wouldn't address a Public Works item, but if I may.
Okay.
Please, please do.
I, what I'm going to, Chairman, what I'm going to do is, I'm just going to ask the commission or advise the commission to, uh, forget that that alignment may exist for purposes of this application. Uh, there may be some question in your mind as to, "Why is there a master-planned freeway that may impact this site someday in the future?" Well, it merely is a master plan. It may happen, it may, the, a project may happen, a project may not happen, and as, as a matter of course, we advise this commission, the city council, not to consider some future alignment or master plan, uh, with reference to an application of this nature.
Thank you. Okay.
So, um, I agree with staff that I think the variance is, is unwarranted. Um, I, I'm curious how many people attended a neighborhood meeting, because I, I was out there and I, I found all of two little bunnies that were at the intersection when I was there. Um, and-
And there were, no one from the public commission?
This, this is, you know, a, a site that is future, and I know there's a lot of things that go into this and, and everything. I was just trying to kind of better understand how, how you envisioned access for your customers and all of those things, so, but, um, other than that, I have no other comments.
I've, uh, looked at the plan and the unusual shape of the parcel and the additional landscaping, um, I think overcompensates for the, um, waivers you're requesting in regards to the, the perimeter landscaping, and the fact that the encroachment is occurring not against residential nor other commercial, but against a, a freeway. I, I find them to be, uh, very minor in, in, um, in weight in the deliberations, so.
Mr. Chairman, you ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
On item 13, GPA 29877, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
And we need to add a note that this is for, uh, a change from PCD to SC Service Commercial and not GC General Commercial.
And that's in C1?
This is the general plan amendment, correct?
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes.
And we'll ask the, uh, the applicant if you agree with all conditions on, uh, on all four items, especially item number 16, which is the site development review, item number 24 as amended by staff.
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, and please, go ahead.
Um, item 14, ZON 298-
Oh, 13, but we haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted?
Yeah.
My motion is for approval on item 13, subject to all staff's recommendation and conditions, and with the addition as read in by Mr. Rankin.
Motion could be made, please cast your vote. Motion carries, item number 14.
Move for approval of item 14, ZON 29878, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
And the approval is for a C1 zoning.
With the approval of C1 zoning.
We concur.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Motion carries, item 15.
Item 15, move for approval of item VAR 29881, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's made, please cast your vote. Motion carries, and item number 16.
Move for approval of, uh, SDR 29879, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Are there any changes to item 24?
Yes, he, he already read them.
Okay, thank you.
Item, so, motion's been made, please cast your vote. Item carries.
All matters go forward to City Council on February 18th.
Thank you very much.
Items 17 through 22 have been, uh, held. We can now move to items 23, 24, 25, and 26, all relating to the same item. Uh, it's, item number 23 is general plan amendment 32167. The applicant is P's Auto Sales. The owner is the Beard Family Trust. It's from SC Service Commercial to G General Commercial at 3920 West Sahara. Item number 24 is zoning 32168. It's from C1 Limited Commercial to C2 General, General Commercial. And item number 25, special use permit 32548, is for proposed motor vehicle sales used establishment with a waiver to allow a 23,900-square-foot parcel where 25,000-square-foot is the minimum required. And item number 26 is SDR 32549. It's a major amendment to be approved, to an approved site development plan review for proposed motor vehicle sales used establishment. Staff report, please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, staff finds the requested, uh, general plan amendment to be incompatible and inconsistent with the surrounding land use and constitutes spot zoning. Uh, in regards to the zone change, uh, the same applies as, uh, this would be incompatible and inconsistent with the, uh, zoning in the area. Uh, in regards to the special use permit, uh, staff finds that this use is not a compatible or harmonious use, as recommended denial, and as such, the site plan itself also cannot function and recommends denial. Uh, please note, we have received added protest. If this item is approved, if staff does have additional conditions that they would like to read into, uh, the record.
Thank you. Like to open it now to the applicant?
Good evening. Okay, sorry. Good evening, Commissioners, Liz Serokak, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway, here on behalf of the applicant. Um, we are here tonight for a piece of property located on the northeast corner of Sahara and Les Verdi Street. Um, this is a request for, uh, a GPA zone change use permit, um, and an SDR. Um, the proposed use is for a used motor vehicle sales, um, business. Uh, there's an existing building on this property that was a break team building. Um, that business has since gone out of business, um, so we would be looking to use the existing building on the property, uh, to, for this business. Um, we see this as an upgrade to this, this particular corner. For some time, there's been no viable business here, and so we're proposing, um, a viable business, which is P's Auto Sales. And you may or may not be aware, but there is another P's Auto Sales, um, here in Las Vegas already. It's on Wyoming and Commerce, and this would be operated by the same, um, the same people. Uh, there was a neighborhood meeting on this application, and the neighbors were okay with this particular use, um, so long as certain conditions were met. And they had concerns about test drives through the neighborhood, the number of vehicles, uh, for sale on the lots, they didn't want it to look too cluttered or too busy. Um, and then they were also concerned about having, um, old or inoperable vehicles located on the property. So we have some additional conditions, uh, that we'd like to read in, that we think address these particular issues. And, uh, I can read in the conditions now, I don't know if staff wants me to read them now. Yes, okay.
Is this something you've submitted?
Yes.
Yes, the applicant has submitted some additional conditions that could be placed upon either the site plan review or the, uh, uh, special use permit. Uh, we got them today and haven't been able to incorporate them into our staff report. Uh, and, uh, if the applicant would like to submit them, uh, they're free to do so.
Okay, as, uh, as long as they're submitted in a fashion where it's not going to place the city in a position of enforcing some kind of a deed restriction or something like that.
No, sir.
The staff has reviewed them, they are not deed restrictions themselves, but they are specific to either the use or the site plan.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, um, we have agreed, uh, additional condition number one, that no inoperative vehicles will be displayed for sale at this location. Uh, additional condition number two, that no more than 17 vehicles shall be displayed for sale on the site as depicted on the site plan, um, that you see on the overhead here, which is dated 1/21/09. Uh, the third additional condition that is, uh, test driving on residential streets shall be prohibited. And the fourth additional condition is the applicant to work with Public Works to reconstruct and redesign the remaining driveway on Les Verdis to eliminate right-hand eager turn movements. And with those additional conditions, we respectfully request this board's approval, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on these matters? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commission members for discussion and possible motion.
Um, the, the consideration I have in approving this item is the fact that you did hold a neighborhood meeting and that it was extremely successful, and the feedback that are your new conditions came from your neighbors. And I find that really encouraging, that, um, if in fact they're, um, put into place and you follow through and you do everything you say, I'm going to support this item simply because you don't have any neighbors here tonight opposing it, but you had a very successful neighborhood meeting with a lot of support. So, um, I'm gonna, uh, trust that you followed through with those conditions, and you will see my support tonight on this item.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, um, I, I think I don't have any particular problem with this particular applicant, other than the fact that we're now, uh, creating some kind of a precedent for this general commercial. And kind of a part of the problem that I see is where this, these properties, a lot of them are kind of run down, and, uh, especially on the, I guess the other side is probably the county. Uh, or may, maybe that's the city, too, I think.
I, I think it's still the city there.
Still the city, yeah. But I guess I just see, uh, what concerns me is the precedent of creating general commercial when, actually, when you go to that part of Sahara, a lot of it is getting rebuilt and, and, and it's looking very nice. And, and so I guess I'm just concerned about creating this precedent where we'll- where we're now going to have car dealers and significant greater commercial uses farther down on Sahara.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. This is an intense use for a small parcel right in this area, and I understand where they have another location. I have a, beyond the pure matter of the intensity of the zoning, the drives, the way they're presented, we're putting a use in here, but we're keeping these old drives, and we're not, we're... These...
Mr. Chairman, if I may point out, condition number fifteen of the S D R, item, what, twenty-six? Requires them to remove and replace all substandards, including the driveways, and to close the two driveways that are closest to the corner. So they'll only end up with one driveway on each street, the ones farthest away from the actual corner.
Okay. We're still not getting to the heart of, we've had a twenty-year, thirty-year-old building there, and we're being asked to improve greater density and intensity here in this quarter. And it doesn't seem to me like there's much of an investment to improve the area. I mean, we're, I envision this as we're going to put a little bit of landscaping, we're going to put a coat of paint on this old building, and we're going to have cars parked out there that we may or may not know if they're running. I don't know how staff enforces that kind of condition on, anyway, I mean, if the battery's dead, it's not operable, and how would we know? It sounds good, but, I mean, we can say that if they're not on blocks, we're okay. I think that's probably a better approach to it. But it just, I'm afraid that, and I don't typically argue this, the precedent, we're seeing an economic turn in this town. We're going to see a lot of closed grocery stores. There are announced closings all over the place. We're going to have a bunch of pad buildings and parking lots that we're going to be asked, as sure as I know, we're going to be asked to consider auto storage, auto sales uses on centers and properties that we haven't historically seen. Just, that is, the market and the world is changing a little bit, and it seems like we're going down a road here where the closed, I'm just waiting for the next application that says the building next door wasn't viable as retail, but is viable as a car lot. And I'm sure that's not what the neighbors envision when they sit there. But to me, it's a slippery slope that we're heading down in this particular area that has had some challenges over the years. And at the other end of the block, there's probably the most unsightly parcel of land in the city of Las Vegas is an auto deal, and it concerns me, so.
Mr. Goins, do you have any comments regarding this matter?
No, I just noticed on the back of, I know Commissioner Quinn had mentioned that was, I think she said it was a good neighborhood meeting, but I just wanted to notice there were probably about seven or eight protests in there as well against it, so. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
If I'm hearing the discussions accurately, the protests were dated, when were those dated? And when was the meeting? Because I think that the modifications that were made that prompted the additional commission, or conditions submitted by the applicant, were developed as a result of the meeting.
The meeting was December tenth? The neighborhood meeting?
And those?
And the additional conditions and the changes to the site plan were, we just finalized those today, or a couple days ago. So we've tried to address the issues that came up at the neighborhood meeting.
Mr. Quinn, do you have a feeling on the matter? Motion?
You know, I just, I'm compelled to listen to my colleagues that are pointing out to me the invasion of this and that we're going to have more of it, and I'm just a little perplexed as to what I thought when I sat down is what I'm thinking now, so.
I think what we've...
I'm worried to make the motion.
Let's have some more discussion. The way I see these requests, they are going to come in. We are going to see more of them. We do have areas of town that are worn and in need of improvements. I think that if the neighbors don't object, or their issues and concerns can be addressed through conditions, we need to give that considerable weight, but I think we need to be willing to provide inducements for people that are willing to come in and invest money into an area that is shop worn. I won't call it blighted, but it's an area that needs some improvements. And I think that on a case-by-case basis, we do need to look at them. Under different times, in different areas, perhaps we would not want to be taking these same considerations into place, but maybe this time, we need to look at the total package. And that's the way I'm looking at it. It's more of an inducement to others to come into the neighborhood. You know, the area across the street is, it needs renovation. The other end of the block here, clearly, as Commissioner Truesdale has said, could use some improvements also, and so we've got to start someplace.
I'm going to agree with you, Commissioner Trebridge, and I'm going to follow my gut and think that this is the appropriate place for this and that it's going to improve the neighborhood. And with all the conditions in place, I'm going to make the motion for approval.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes.
Of number twenty-three, starting with GPA three-two-one-six-seven, I'm going to make the motion for approval.
Motion's been made.
With all staff's recommendations and all...
There's no conditions, so that's fine.
Will you include the additional conditions as submitted by the applicant?
No, that's later.
Okay, later, okay. Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Motion fails. Item number twenty-four?
Do you want to take another motion?
No, we need a, yeah, we need a motion in the affirmative.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion in the for denial of GPA three-two-one-six-seven.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Motion carries, item number twenty-four?
And I'll make a motion for approval of the zoning of number twenty-four, three-two-one-six-eight, the rezoning related to the GPA.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post. That motion also fails. You entertain a motion to the contrary?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for denial of Z O N three-two-one-six-eight.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post. Motion carries, item number twenty-five?
I'm going to hit a home run with a motion for approval of S U P three-two-five-four-eight, special use permit where all those added conditions would go, as Margot will read into the record for me eloquently.
As I, there would be two additional conditions on the S U P, that there will be no more than seventeen vehicles for sale at any one time, and that the applicant should be required to ensure that there is no test driving on residential streets.
And hours of operation, Tabitha, wasn't that something as well? Staff, hours of operation?
I didn't have hours, no.
The applicant didn't submit anything regarding hours of operation. This is C two. It would be allowed up to twenty-four hours a day.
Oh, no, absolutely. Well, that's impossible. So now there would be hours of operation? At six in the morning until six P M.
That's the motion?
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Motion fails. Reconsider, or the contrary motion?
Mr. Chairman, move for denial of S U P three-two-five-four-eight.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Motion carries, item number twenty-six?
Motion for approval of S D R three-two-five-four-nine, the site development plan review.
Staff does have some amended conditions.
With all amended conditions, please.
If I may, my thought would be that the site plan should be amended to clearly delineate the required parking separate from the vehicle sales area. With regard to the changing on the driveways, I believe staff's recommendation would be to retain the condition as written by Public Works.
And one additional item here is all development should be in conformance with the site plan and landscape plan dated, date stamped one-twenty-two-oh-nine, and building elevations date stamped twelve-oh-nine-oh-eight, except as amended by conditions herein.
And also, the additional condition regarding the reconfiguration of the remaining driveway on Las Vista to eliminate right turn movements out.
Onto Las Verdis.
That's right.
Okay, motion's been made, please cast your vote. Motion fails. Motion to the contrary, please.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion for denial of S D R three-two-five-four-nine.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post, thank you.
All matters go forward to council on February eighteenth.
Thank you.
Item twenty-seven, twenty-eight have been continued. We now move to item number twenty-nine and thirty, which are related items. It's general plan amendment thirty-two, one-oh-five, general plan amendment, public hearing. The applicant is the Las Vegas Valley Water District. The owner is the city of Las Vegas. It's a request from, to zone change, general plan amendment, from SC service commercial to PF public facilities at seventy-four sixty-five Peak Drive. Item number thirty is zone change thirty-two, one-oh-six, from C one limited commercial to C V Civic. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that the proposed general plan amendment and zone change are compatible and harmonious with the surrounding area and also with the current use, which is a water pumping facility, and recommends approval of both items.
Thank you.
Please note, we have received an additional support.
Thank you. Would you like to declare the public hearing open and invite the applicant to comment?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Bronson Mack, one thousand one South Valley View, here on behalf of the applicant. This site is a Las Vegas Valley Water District well site. It does pump groundwater during the summer months to help meet peak demands. Site was developed in nineteen ninety-five. For whatever reason, it was never zoned properly and appears under the general plan as a service commercial. This being a public facility, we would like to get it in conformance. Ask that we amend the plan for a public facility, and then, of course, the companion item for the rezoning to Civic. I am available to answer any questions you may have and ask for your approval on this item.
Thank you. The public hearing is open. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, seeing none, move to approve item twenty-nine, GPA three-two-one-oh-five, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item thirty?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve item thirty, Z O N three-two-one-zero-six, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post. That item carries.
Matters go forward to council two-eighteenth.
Thank you.
We now move to item number thirty-one and thirty-two, related item. It's a general plan amendment thirty-two, one-oh-eight. The applicant owner is Las Vegas Valley Water District. It's from L Low Density Residential to PF Public Facility on the north side of U S ninety-five, approximately one thousand two hundred and fifty feet east of Decatur Boulevard. Item thirty-two is zoning thirty-two, one-one-zero, from residential estates to C V Civic. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, as the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning requests are compatible with the surrounding area and will bring the subject site's use into conformance with the general plan in Title Nineteen, staff is recommending approval of the applications. Please note, additional letters of support, additional letter of support has been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. I'd like to turn it over to the applicant for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Bronson Mack, one thousand one, South Valley View, here on behalf of the applicant. This is an existing water district facility. It is, again, a well site. It does pump groundwater to help meet peak demands during the summer. Site was developed in the mid nineteen sixties, again, for whatever reason. This site is not in conformance with the general plan, nor is it zoned properly. This being a water district facility, we would like to amend the plan and then rezone the site to a Civic designation. Available to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. Public hearing is open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, motion on item thirty-one, GPA three-two-one-zero-eight, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made for approval. Please cast your vote. Post. Motion carries, number thirty-two?
Move for approval of item thirty-two, Z O N three-two-one-one-zero, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post. Motion carries.
Council on February eighteen.
Thank you.
We can now move to item number thirty-four and thirty-five. They're related items. Item number thirty-four is zoning thirty-four, four-seventy-seven. It's from C two general commercial and R E residential states to C two general commercial. Item thirty-five, the site development review thirty-two, four-seventy-eight, for proposed five fifty thousand one hundred square foot office and retail development with a waiver of the building placement and orientation standards. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff notes that the applicant has requested, and previously you withdrew the request for the general plan amendment to GC general commercial. As such, the applicant is requesting that the planning commission amend their application to request to C one, which is in conformance to the land use, which is SC service commercial, and staff recommends approval of that. In regards to the site plan itself, staff notes that it can support, in spite of the waiver, the staff finds the waiver minor in nature and is recommending approval of the site plan.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, I would like to comment that I do have two letters, emails, that have been given to me before the meeting, and I'd like to give them to the city clerk for record. One is from a Todd Schwartz, and the other one is from a Mr. Mike Ruscinich. Just turn them over, they're letters of concern. So now I'd like to open the public hearing and turn it over to the applicant for comments.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Armstrong, V T N, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, South Rainbow. Here representing the applicant. As staff stated, we withdrew the general plan amendment, and we are amending our zoning request from C two to C one. We've read staff report, and we concur with staff recommendations and respectfully request your approval. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion. I have one comment. I understand that the neighbors were acceptable to the project as a C one. However, they wanted to make sure that there were no palm trees included in the site plan. Some other species?
We can remove those palm trees. In our landscaping plan, we showed some palm trees. We will remove those during the final construction phase of the project.
Thank you, and they would be replaced with similarly sized plants?
Correct. Prior to the submission of the improvement plans, we will go out, take a look at what type of trees are out there. We will work with the neighbors to provide them with what they think is appropriate for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have comments regarding these? Any other commissioners have comments regarding these?
If no other comments, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Of the C one?
Of the C one.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post, motion carries.
Thank you.
And regards to item number thirty-five?
There, it's item thirty-five, follow staff's recommendations for approval with the additional condition that there are no palm trees.
The landscape plans shall be amended to remove palm trees and replace with the same sized trees as approved by planning and development.
And Mr. Chairman, staff has one additional comment, we did receive a revised plan on this to delineate some setback issues and would like to amend condition number two to read as follows, all development shall be in conformance with the site plan date stamped one sixteen oh-nine, landscape plan date stamped one twenty-one oh-nine, and the building elevations date stamped twelve-oh-eight-oh-eight except as amended by conditions herein.
And the applicant is agreeable with all that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Motion is for approval.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council on February eighteenth.
We can now move to agenda item number forty-six and forty-seven. Item number forty-six is zoning twenty-three, I'm sorry, thirty-two to fourteen, the applicant owner is True Love Baptist Church from R four High Density Residential to C V Civic at nineteen forty-one H Street. And item number forty-seven is site development review thirty-two-two-eighteen for a proposed four thousand six hundred and eighty-six square foot modular building addition to an existing church house of worship. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed rezoning of the site to Civic will bring the site zoning district into conformance with the existing public facilities' general plan designation. In addition, the proposed development has been found to be in compliance with the Title Nineteen and therefore can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the surrounding area. Therefore, staff recommends approval of both applications. Please note additional letters of support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open and invite the applicant to comment, please.
Yes, my name is Robert Gertison, I'm at ninety-four eighty-one Orecart Street. I'm representing the True Love Baptist Church and agree with the conditions and the approval and would like to request your approval on this.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare, sir, please put the microphone.
My name is Willie Jacobs Junior, I'm the pastor of True Love Church and this will be a great improvement for our community to be able to have classes and do things to touch our young people. To have summer classes that we, because we live in a community where there's bilingual and there's many things that we can do. Plus, it will enhance the, the view of the community. You saw the picture there. We spent about twenty thousand dollars just putting walls up and we had the city close the back off so that we wouldn't have traffic. So the idea is to enhance it, plus to instill in our young people to help them develop them, develop their minds. To have religious services and also secular studies. Plan on getting involved with this, with the, with the school district. I met with one that we'll be able to do G E D and different things in our community to be able to improve our people's knowledge and understanding and to just enhance our young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Anyone else wishing to speak on the matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Discussion, motion, ready for motion. On the zoning, I have no problem with the zoning. Move for approval of item Z O N three-two-two-one-four, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post. Motion carries, item forty-seven.
I do have some comments on item forty-seven.
Comment away.
I was just looking at the site plan and I see that I'm all for the development of this, of this area and I understand what the church wants to do and I'm glad Pastor Jacobs mentioned mentoring the kids, but one of the issues if we're going to mentor them for a long, mentor them for a long time to come, I have a little problem with a modular building because to me modular means temporary. The school district uses a term called portable. And so while I understand maybe the plight of the church, but I think we want to try to make that building look as, as, as permanent a structure as it is. And I think that can be done through your landscaping plan. One of the things I saw on there was the fifteen gallon tree where I believe code requires a, a twenty-four box tree. Can we get the twenty-four in there as opposed to the smaller one? Because I, because I think what happens is when we start to, start to, when we put the building there, that's fine and well, but how does it look at it, at its complete fruition? And I think we ought to hold a code and put the twenty-four inch box in there so that when this church matures and, and aesthetically as it blends with the old building, it, it doesn't stand out. So, and that's what I'm getting at because I, I look at staff's recommendations and it says the, the proposed development is compatible, compatible with adjacent development and development in the area. To me, that kind of bothers me when, when, when a lot of the, the requests come in for the modular and that kind of sets a precedent that, you know, you, you can build anything of a temporary nature. And I think we need more buildings that are going to sustain over a long period of time. So, but to get that modular building to look as permanent, I think all of that, including what the landscaping needs to come in, because that's going to define your, your development after you're done. Right now, the, the parking lot is, is primarily, it is landscaped up to the church, but it's primarily a, a blacktop and, and desert. And I think we need to green it up a little bit over there as much as possible.
And I would agree, as far as addressing the fifteen gallon shrubbery, I don't think that's out of the question unless anybody would object from the church, if that's okay. We're, we're going to go ahead and put the twenty-four inch box trees as per code in the parking lot and not do the fifteen gallon. And as far as addressing the architecture, it is a modular building, it's pre-manufactured. But as you can see on the landscape, we have enhanced landscaping in front of the modular building. In addition to that, we're not just going with a normal modular building, we're, we're going to dress it up, we're going to put a parapet skirt above to, to address any viewable mechanical equipment. In addition to that, we're going to bring a colored band that mimics the existing church so that they both tie in together, as long, as well as the, the color of the, the building. And lastly, the, along the bottom of the, of the modular building, we're going to add a skirt along the bottom in which the, the landscape can have a background against, so it doesn't feel like it's hovering or if it's on wheels, it feels like it's grounded and it'll be seated well in the landscape.
Your, your area between the, the church and the new building where it says the concrete paving in that area, I, I like the circulation around there, but there'll act, there'll be no cars going through there, will it?
Absolutely not.
Okay, that's all pedestrian traffic.
Let me just, one thing out, we do have a fire root that goes around the building, between the buildings.
And your trash enclosure, was it right there on the corner? Yes, right.
Trash enclosure is screened behind the existing church. And so what, what the idea is, eventually we'll put a door to the back of the existing church that would have some sort of linkage or connection to this new modular building. And we are going to have protective curbs, but we're going to have landscaping or enhanced landscape to make that connection and then in front of this building, we are going to put shrubs and landscaping.
Are you going to have, what I, what I typically see on the modular fronts, are you going to have a, a, a access ramp for persons with disability?
Absolutely.
Will that be a ramp that, is it going to, so will, will we be looking at a ramp that goes up in the front?
There will be a ramp up in the front and if I can show you this exhibit here of the elevation, so that ramp. What we've done was we've incorporated this ramp and, the ramp is incorporated with this overhang piece that helps present the entry and brings the ramp as part of the, the building just so it doesn't feel like it's this ramp that's tacked on to the front. The main reason we did that is you, you are going to see this ramp and you're going to see this entry as you're driving up through this aisle. We do have a secondary ramp as required by code out of the back. This one will be just a more of a utility ramp since it's not going to be in high view of, of public.
Very good. Absolutely no cooking or anything like that in the facility?
As long as it's really good food. No.
I know Pastor Jake, they, they throw down over there.
I'm telling you.
If I may, Commissioner, condition number three specifically references the requirement that the trees be twenty-four inch box size.
Thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to make an editorial comment, I'm going to, I'm going to support your request. But I, I think, I would like to invite you to go up and look at some converted modular buildings that were in place that drove the planning commission, the neighbors and the parishioners wild of the International Church of Las Vegas. It's on West Cliff just north of Rainbow.
West Cliff just north of Rainbow?
Yes. They've gone in there and made their modular units look very, very permanent. They're, they've done a fantastic job of making them compatible with the existing structure that have been there for years. And when you go up and look at that and, and develop a vision for what it should be, I would also invite you and I would be happy to help in any way humanly possible to, to speed up the process that you have to go back to ground zero. But you may want to give consideration to, rather than bringing in a modular unit with the vision being that you're going to make these subsequent enhancements to bring it into a more aesthetic look with, with the balance of the buildings and in consideration of today's market, there is a lot of construction companies out there that just might give you a very favorable bid as compared to buying a modular unit, bringing in all the ADA enhancements that are going to be required and then still some future time, go back and try to make it aesthetically more pleasing. All that wrapped together, you might be better off just going for the stick build right now because you're not going to get any better building bids ever than what you're going to get right now. And having said that, I'm just preaching to the preacher. Please accept my comments in the manner in which they're intended. I'm ready for a motion.
Thank you.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve item forty-seven, S D R three-two-two-one-eight, with amendments to conditions, it's read in. Mr. Rankin?
Motion's been made.
Oh, that's read in by Mr. Rankin.
We have no, no, no changes.
I think it was Director Wheeler with the.
Can't blame it on anyone.
Mr. Chairman, condition number three addressed the size of the trees, it's already written in, into the condition.
Okay, very good, inclusive. Move for approval.
There you go. Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion carries.
Goes forward to council on February eighteenth.
We can now move to item number forty-eight and forty-nine, related items. Item number forty-eight is variance thirty-two-four-four-eight, the applicant owner is O and A Properties LLC to allow a building setback of forty-three feet where residential adjacency standards require ninety-six feet. A five-foot front yard setback where twenty-five feet is required and a seven-foot corner setback where fifteen feet is required at eleven forty-one South Maryland Parkway. Item number forty-nine is site development review thirty-two-four-forty-seven for a proposed two thousand six hundred and seventy-two square foot two-story office building with waivers to allow landscape buffers of five feet along the north perimeter where fifteen feet is required, seven feet along the west perimeter where fifteen feet is required and zero feet along the south and east perimeters where eight feet is required. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that the requested variance to be a self-imposed hardship as an alternative design could have addressed this issue. In regards to the site plan, staff is unable to support the waivers requested and has recommended denial of both items.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open and invite the applicant to comment.
Good evening, commissioners. David Ellerton, one oh-three East Charleston here before you. On behalf of this item, along with me are Orlando and Alex DeCastroverdi, the owners of the property and proposed developers of the building that is before you tonight. What we have is a, first, I'd like to address the, the very first thing that, that was, or the last comment that was made, I should say, about it being a self-imposed hardship. This is an unusual property in terms of its shape, its setback requirements being twenty-five feet at the front, fifteen at the corner side, and the, and the southern and the eastern setbacks as well, result in a piece of, of land in the middle of this property that, at a one-story development, which would comply with the code in terms of residential adjacency setback requirements, would yield a very small billable envelope. And that is even without putting the parking on the site that would be required to support the use. Okay? But that said, I'd like to turn and, and give you a little history on, on, on the two brothers here standing before you. Their father has operated a law firm just south of this property for over fifteen years. And in the last three years when they bought this property, this used to be, if any of you are familiar with, the old front boy building on Maryland Parkway on the east side of Circle Park. Well, as you can imagine, or if your memory serves you, the building, you know, wasn't horrible, but it wasn't in the best of shape. And so they invested their money despite the state of the neighborhood, despite the, the obstacles of fighting graffiti that they knew were problems for this building and other buildings in the neighborhood. And they chose to make the investment to make an improvement, which is the top right picture here that you're seeing, to that building. They did, they did major improvements to both the exterior and the interior to create for them a, a home for their law firm, you know, a, a, you know, beginnings of a law firm. So here they are, two years later before you. They've bought the property to the north, that's the picture on the left-hand side of the top that you see there. It's an existing residential building that has been operating as a business for years. And it is their intention to take what the four images below, below the two upper images show, take this building and create a bigger home for their law firm that they have already. Their intentions are to create a campus-like atmosphere, to utilize the materials that were, were used in the remodel of the first building, which our office was involved with as well. Okay? And, and bring, you know, some, some, you know, togetherness, if you will, to, to this area. The, you know, we had a meeting with Councilman Reese. He suggested we go and talk with the neighbors, Owen Messenger specifically, because he's believed to be a, you know, a ringleader, if you will, for the neighbors, you know, when he doesn't like a project or does like a project. And so they did do that, they went and met with Owen Messenger, he did offer his support and even forwarded an email to Councilman Reese's assistant. We spoke over the telephone with, with Councilman, or Commissioner Evans, who I'm sad to say isn't here this evening, about this project. And he was very appreciative and complimentary of the work that we did on the existing building, their existing office. So, so that's why we're here tonight. We're here to, to show their further dedication to the Huntington neighborhood, their, their further willingness to spend yet more money, as many other people have made, you know, comments about tonight in these tough economic times that we're in, to, to create a new building and refresh a, a site that, you know, is tired and old and, and, and needs, needs improvement. And they do this, you know, in good faith and have, you know, variances that they're, they're requesting the residential adjacency, I mean, it's a tight site. So they've pushed the building as close as they can to the right of way. They've put the parking behind it, which is, I know, a goal of the city on a regular basis. And they meet the parking requirements, so they're not asking for variance there. But we have a good project here. They feel very strongly about it, we feel very strongly about it. If you care to ask us any questions or ask Alex and Orlando any questions, please be my guest. But we would seek your approval of this item before you this evening and we would agree to all the if-approved conditions that staff has. With one item that we'd like to discuss very briefly, item thirteen in the conditions for the S D R, and that is in regards to the building lighting. One aspect of the building lighting in that condition states that lighting is, for the building is supposed to be downward aimed. And it's been their direct experience in the years they've been in their building And it's been their direct experience in the years they've been in their building currently that through the addition of lighting that uplifts the building, it provides good security for the building and has drastically reduced the amount of graffiti that they've experienced on their building. So we would seek an amendment to that condition just to allow them to uplift the building. They don't want to direct it towards neighbors. They just want to be able to uplift their building to help further, you know, obey any possible graffiti. But again, we'd seek your approval this evening and answer any questions for you.
Thank you. The public hearing is open. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask the question of the planning staff. What about those uplifts versus downlights?
I think the goal of Title 19.08 is to shield lighting spillover to residential properties. If they were able to point it upwards and shield it, I don't know if there would be an issue in regards to Title 19.08 and development standards.
So language change on item 13 on the...
Sentence two could be amended to just state that the lighting on the exterior of the building shall be shielded, subject to approval of P and D.
Okay. Okay. Now I'd like to... The public hearing is closed. We turn it over to the balance of the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Just what's the height of that building?
It's 32 feet, Commissioner.
Right at 32?
That's correct.
Okay. What about the building to the... I guess that would be to the north?
Their existing building?
Yeah. How tall is that one?
Their existing building, I believe, is approximately 18 or 19 feet, somewhere in that range.
So be a little higher than that.
Well, this is a two-story building, and that's, you know, the reasoning behind it, sorry.
Thank you.
Sir, did you discuss with Commissioner Evans the landscaping, number eight, the landscaping meets all the codes?
That we...
The landscaping, that your intention, did you submit a landscape drawing?
We do have a landscape drawing here, actually, as part of the application. That's actually one of the waivers that we're requiring, requesting because of the reduced setbacks at both Francis and at Maryland Parkway. I mean, we're down to seven feet at the narrowest point on Maryland Parkway, and technically to our property line, we're down to five feet. But I'm not sure whether you're familiar with the neighborhood, but...
Very familiar.
Okay. So this Francis isn't developed to its full right-of-way capacity, so we actually, in effect, have 12 feet of landscaping along Francis that we're providing.
I see.
So we're actually providing more landscaping than legally we're allowed to, if you will, because our property line is where it is.
Those trees, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, those trees won't cause any visibility issues for folks that come out to try to get onto Maryland Parkway, do they?
They will not. No, we've taken great care to coordinate with the site visibility zone requirements that occur there at the radius to make sure that nothing...
Yeah, you don't have to kind of creep out in Martin Luther King or Maryland Parkway.
No, and it's actually, this intersection is kind of unique in that sense, because when you make that right-hand turn onto Maryland Parkway, you're actually past this property, because the road is curving back away from the property as it makes its way north to Charleston.
Thank you.
No further discussion. I think we're ready for a motion. Please.
I'm ready to make a motion for approval. I'm sorry. Of number 48, with all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes.
What's the name of the law firm?
P. Gaspar Verdi Law Group.
You better come get that in.
Thanks.
You never know how many are watching.
In regards to item number 49?
I make a recommendation for approval of number 49, with all staff's recommendations.
Amended condition 13 as read in.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Goes forward to counsel on February 18th.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I need a check, come see you. I got it.
Okay, so we now move to item number 50 and companion item number 51. Item number 50 is variance 32531. The applicant is Clearwire U.S. LLC. The owner is Y.S. and A.J. Associates, who allow a 70-foot wireless communications facility, stealth-designed flagpole, to have a 180-foot setback where residential adjacency standards require 210 feet at 450 South Buffalo Drive. Item number 51 is special use permit 32604 for a 10-foot extension to an existing 60-foot wireless communications facility, stealth-designed flagpole. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed addition in height to the existing wireless communication facility will precipitate an increased visual intrusion upon the surrounding community and therefore impacting its welfare. Furthermore, the use cannot be conducted in a harmonious manner, as it is evidenced by the requested variance from the residential adjacency standards. Therefore, staff has recommended denial of both applications. Please note additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to clear the public hearing open now and invite the applicant to comment.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to address the commission this evening. My name is Anthony Perez. I'm from 7030 Smoke Ranch Road here in Las Vegas, Nevada, and I represent the applicant Clearwire. Clearwire, as you may know, is building a wireless network throughout the Las Vegas Valley, and one of the sites that they are currently proposing is located at 450 South Buffalo. As the pictures show, really what we're requesting, already in existence, is a T-Mobile tower there that is 60 feet tall, and what we are proposing is to increase the height by 10 feet to make it a 70-foot pole. And the reason that we need this height is that the Clearwire engineers have determined that at this particular location, to blend in with the rest of the network and to integrate the site into the remainder of the network, that a height of 57 feet is necessary. And currently, that's what T-Mobile occupies on that existing tower. So what we propose to do is to increase it by 10 feet. T-Mobile would take the top, and we would mount our antennas at 57 feet. We would respectfully disagree with staff's characterization of this request as a self-inflicted hardship. We need, as a new network, we need to have sites all over the valley, and the way it's designed, the search rings in this particular instance are pretty small, because Clearwire's frequency doesn't penetrate as well as some of the others. So this site is really a vital part of the whole network that's being built in the valley. Actually, the alternative is, instead of raising the tower by 10 feet, the alternative would be to build a new tower. In the area shown here, the blue is all residential, and the large areas over to the northwest are civic uses. And really, within that area, there is no other property that would meet the code for us to build a new tower if we would have wanted to. So it's really not a self-inflicted hardship, because we need coverage in the area to make the network viable, and there are no other alternative sites within that area to build a new tower. In addition, really, it's the spirit of the wireless ordinance for co-location, so indeed, this is kind of a strange request. It doesn't come up too often, where staff suggests that maybe a new tower would be better than placing your antennas on an existing structure. In addition, we would also respectfully disagree with staff's characterization that this will have a significant visual intrusion. First, as you can tell by the photos, it's already a stealth design, which is also favored by the code, and a new tower in this area obviously would be, well, we would need a 60-foot tower. So obviously, that would be a greater visual intrusion than extending this tower 10 feet. In addition, there are some natural barriers in the area that serve to mitigate any visual intrusion. Here, you'll see to the, you can't see it very clearly there, but the building, there's a building in an L shape here, and it's about a 25-foot building, and it serves as a natural barrier. In reality, the only folks that are, the only properties that are protected are these three parcels here and these three parcels to the up here, and they're the only ones that are less than 210 feet away from the proposed extension. And this building, actually, their backyards are fairly narrow, and the building itself actually provides a kind of a self-shield, where these folks in their backyard will likely not even be able to see the tower. They currently can't, and I think with the 10-foot extension, they probably couldn't see the new extension either. In addition, the, I don't know if you'll be able to tell from the photos, there are also other larger, taller structures in the area. There's some light poles and palm trees, and then, you know, the building itself from the residence over here also provides some natural mitigation for the increase in height. And finally, rather than be an injury to public welfare, I think that the increase would actually result in increasing public welfare. It would allow T-Mobile to mount their antennas at a higher height, which will allow their coverage to be greater, and will also let their signal penetrate buildings and the residences in this area better than they currently do. So T-Mobile's coverage will actually improve because of this increase, which I think is important, given the fact that a lot of people are changing from their home landlines to cellular phones, and they'll have better coverage, which will give them better access to 911. In addition, Clearwire is a wireless internet provider, and it'll be an affordable solution to the residents of the area. So in light of those facts, we hope that, would ask that both applications be approved.
Thank you. The public hearing is open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the mic over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Just a quick comment. I don't know if this starts to set precedents, but just because we have a couple of streetlights that may be a little higher doesn't mean we have to add 10 feet on anything. My thing is, I think it sets a dangerous precedent for every other tower that's now at 70 feet that wants another 10 to go up to 80. So with those comments, I won't be able to support the motion for setting precedents. I think this just opens Pandora's box for more.
May I?
Through the chairman?
Mr. Chairman, may I address the comment?
Feel free.
Actually, I think that the height restriction is 70 feet, so if somebody wanted to go up to an additional height above 70 feet, then they would actually have to make a different request in addition to what we're requesting. So, I mean, I think there's a built-in safeguard there that all structures are 70 feet, or that's the height limit, and I would suggest that probably most of them were built to the height limit to begin with, so that would be a completely separate request.
You're going from 60 to 70?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but most towers, I'm assuming here, would probably, the height limit's 70 feet, and I would suggest that if I were going to build a tower, I would build it to the height limit at 70.
My first reaction was that, you know, first of all, I don't think we want to get involved in anything that's going to accommodate a larger flag. We've had that, we've had those discussions, so... And the second observation is that this is presented as a flagpole with a very patriotic flag in place and waving in the breeze, but in order for that to be, it either has to be taken up and down every day or properly lit. And so my question is, will this flagpole be properly lit, or have the owners of the property agreed to the commitment to raise and lower the flag properly every day?
Mr. Chairman, that's a good question. That flagpole itself is actually owned and operated by T-Mobile. I do not believe that they remove the flag every evening, and I don't recall if the flag was there during the day. I'm not sure if the flag is lit. Those are valid concerns that we could take into consideration and ask T-Mobile to bring that into compliance. The alternative, which may be a better alternative, which is kind of what a lot of the stealth designs are going to, is just actually remove the flag, where you have the stealth pole and the antennas are on the inside, but the flag is not there.
That's probably where I was headed, really. So absent the flag, we've just got this large pole sticking up there in the middle of the thing. I was moved to see it as a flagpole, and now I don't like its looks just as a pole.
Okay. Well, in that case, we would certainly make sure that the flag would be brought up to compliance.
Yeah. Flagpoles I like, just big sticks coming out of the ground aren't very aesthetic. Do we have a motion regarding?
One comment. You know, we're going to get, as you indicated, Clearwire, and there's other purveyors that want to overlap new services and new networks and new networks. But I'm just concerned that we have a structure here now, and I understand you want your service, just like T-Mobile wanted their service, and just like the 15 other companies that have merged up, and all the affordability that's been talked about is blended into some other business model. So your idea of affordable internet kind of isn't really what should be swaying our decision by any means. We have the technology in communities to create these towers, these services, within the fabric that the community has set, within the design standards, but it seems to me that every new vendor, every new purveyor comes to us and says, "Well, let me in. Let, I mean, just one more, just one more." And at what point do we say the network here, this, of these flags, palm trees, pine trees on steroids, and all the other things that are really an aberration at some point? I mean, they're just disproportionate to the area around it. At what point do we say we've built, we restrict houses to certain heights, but yet everybody wants to tell us how we should let every other of these utility structures just overbear these houses? I understand that you're talking about the three houses are right there, but this is an intersection that has school, ball fields. I believe there's alternatives that would allow facilities to come in here at heights that would be truly stealth or invisible to the neighbors, that actually support this, that really live here and have to deal with this every day. So I've been trying to find ways to, you know, be a little more supportive of some of the, but it just seems like if we, every time we give a little bit, it's... I know you say that, you know, it's only 600, or 60 feet. I guarantee you, before the next round of vendors, and there is another round of vendors or masterlessors of these facilities, we're going to be, there's just pressure to put 70 and 80-foot towers. And I just think we need the, we need the cellular industry to truly look at this as they are the community at the residential level.
No further discussion. I believe we're ready for a motion.
I'm going to make the motion to follow staff's recommendation of denial of number 50, variance 32531.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Post. Motion carries. Item 51.
I'm going to follow staff's recommendation as well and my commissioner's discussion with number 51 for denial of SUP 32604.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Motion carries. Now I'd like to call a brief recess.
If I may, and that denial is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Motion, we'll have a brief recess. Be back in about 10 minutes. Thank you.
If I may, and that denial is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Motion, uh, we'll have a, uh, brief recess. Be back in about 10 minutes. Thank you.
[laughing]
Okay. About one more minute, we'll be ready to go. Just giving the electronic folks a head up if they like that. Okay, I'd like to recall the meeting to order. We have item number 52 and 53 and 54 related items, variance, uh, now item number 52 is variance 32541. The applicant owner is Marcus Nave, is to allow a five-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required, to allow an 11-foot corner side yard setback where 15 feet is required, and to allow a 10-foot rear yard setback where 20 feet is required at the eastern, southeast corner of C Street and Jackson Avenue. Item 53 is special use permit 32543 for proposed mixed-use development with a waiver to allow no architectural differentiation of uses. Item number 54 is site development review 32540 for proposed 2,212 square foot mixed-use development with waivers to allow a residential adjacency setback of 5 feet where 81 feet is required, to allow a waiver of building placement and orientation standards and waivers of the perimeter landscaping buffer requirements to allow a portion of the north and west perimeter to be 0 feet where 15 feet is required, and to allow a portion of the east perimeter to be 3 feet where 15 feet is required, and to allow a portion of the south perimeter to be 10 feet where 15 feet is required. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff is unable to support the variances. They find that it's a self-imposed hardship, uh, and recommends denial in regards to the special use permit and site plan review. The, uh, staff is unable to support the requested waivers and, uh, the multiple Title 19 requirements and is recommending denial of the associated applications. Please note, we have received additional protests. Uh, staff would also like to draw to attention that, uh, that there is a condition regarding the parking here that is unusual. Uh, in order to meet the parking standards for a mixed-use project, the garage on-site will need to be open for the public use during normal business hours in order to provide adequate parking.
Thank you. I'd like to now declare the public hearing open and invite anyone in attendance that wanted to speak and invite the applicant to be the first speaker. Want to explain your project?
Very good. My name is Sean Logan, representative for Marcus Nave, 501 Aaron Way, Boulder City, Nevada. Um, I'd just like to read a prepared statement, um, to give you a little background on why I'm here tonight, more so than just all the requests and variances that are before you, if I may take a moment.
Please.
Mr. Nave's residence was fire destroyed in August of 2007. At this time, City Planning told Mr. Nave that he was required to rebuild under its current zoning, which is C2 mixed-use. The City Planning Department did not inform him at this time that he has six months to be able to rebuild under residential zoning. The insurance company took their sweet time in approving insurance claim for property. Several months passed by before he had insurance claim approved. He then pursued rebuilding of this property and is now faced with the stringent setbacks landscaping, parking, and building separation requirements, which you will see are addressed in the waivers provided before you this day. I was hired to help with this project in October of 2008. As I investigated the lot requirements, I found this lot to be very difficult to put any new building on it with reasonable square footage due to the new C2 setbacks. I also found out at this time, after speaking with staff review, found out about the six-month clause to be able to rebuild as a residential home, which of course I did try to find out if that could be extended at all, which found out that no one, also found out that this would be a very difficult lot to rezone back under any residential pretenses. Um, considering all that, considering all this, that is why I'm before you this day to request variances, special use permits, and waivers so Mr. Nave may rebuild a proper mixed-use building. I would like to state that none of this had to happen if he was informed correctly originally of the right to build back residential home within six months of the fire damage. This is a very small lot to work with, although we meet majority of the requirements of city planning for landscaping, parking, et cetera. The waivers before you state what we do not meet as far as the city planning requires. Hope you will understand and consider Mr. Nave's hardship and approve the request before you this evening.
Thank you. The public hearing is open. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Please approach the mic and give your name for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. Dietrich Sanford, address 307 West Van Buren Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89106.
And Jackie Brantley, 1317 Manpass Circle, Las Vegas, Nevada.
I just wanted to speak, uh, briefly on the, uh, the case at hand to say that we do, um, support staff's denial of the, uh, application, um, with seeing that, uh, our, our neighborhood is typically, is, is residential, uh, not looking to see, uh, a mixed-use come in, especially with a two-story, um, height. Um, hearing the story from the applicant this evening, um, we do definitely support residential coming back into the area. Um, there are, uh, there's another house around the corner that actually was built, um, as a residential area. And we would definitely support the applicant-
Oh, look, we've watched out, look, he's down there, everybody's walking around. Here, these are shoot to you. One's titled P, the second one's like P.
Don't come to you.
One's a B. And then one's a C.
I'm not careful.
Repeat.
No, that's what, it's gonna be, I'm gonna ask you.
No, just.
Commissioner Evans said let him know how. I asked you guys, are.
No, no, I didn't say that.
No.
I said, have you guys done?
Not my company really, too. Yeah, we do a new, new, new way of doing that. New way of doing that.
Okay, about one more minute, we'll be ready to go. Just giving the electronic folks a head up, if they like that. Okay, I could recall the meeting to order. We have item number fifty-two and fifty-three and fifty-four related items, variance, uh, now, item number fifty-two is variance thirty-two, five forty-one. The applicant owner is Marcus Nave, is to allow a five-foot side yard setback where ten feet is required, to allow an eleven-foot corner side yard setback where fifteen feet is required, and to allow a ten-foot rear yard setback where twenty feet is required at the eastern, southeast corner of C Street and Jackson Avenue. Item fifty-three is special use permit thirty-two, five forty-three for proposed mixed-use development with a waiver to allow no architectural differentiation of uses. Item number fifty-four is site development review thirty-two, five forty for proposed two thousand two hundred and twelve square foot mixed-use development with waivers to allow a residential adjacency setback of five feet where eighty-one feet is required, to allow a waiver of building placement and orientation standards, and waivers of the perimeter landscaping buffer requirements, to allow a portion of the north and west perimeter to be zero feet where fifteen feet is required, and to allow a portion of the east perimeter to be three feet where fifteen feet is required, and to allow a portion of the south perimeter to be ten feet where fifteen feet is required. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff is unable to support the variances. They find that it's a self-imposed hardship, uh, and recommends denial in regards to the special use permit and site plan review. The, uh, staff is unable to support the requested waivers and, uh, the multiple Title Nineteen requirements, and is recommending denial of the associated applications. Please note, we have received additional protests. Uh, staff would also like to draw to attention that, uh, that there is a condition regarding the parking here that is unusual. Uh, in order to meet the parking standards for a mixed-use project, the garage on-site will need to be open for the public use during normal business hours in order to provide adequate parking.
Thank you. I'd like to now declare the public hearing open, invite anyone in attendance that wanted to speak, and invite the applicant to be the first speaker. Want to explain your project?
Very good. My name is Sean Logan, representative for Marcus Nave, five oh one, Erinway, Boulder City, Nevada. Um, I'd just like to read a prepared statement, um, to give you a little background on why I'm here tonight, more so than just all the requests and variances that are before you, if I may take a moment.
Please.
Mr. Nave's residence was fire destroyed in August of two thousand and seven. At this time, city planning told Mr. Nave that he was required to rebuild under its current zoning, which is C-two mixed-use. The city planning department did not inform him at this time that he has six months to be able to rebuild under residential zoning. The insurance company took their sweet time in approving insurance claim for property. Several months passed by before he had insurance claim approved. He then pursued rebuilding of this property, is now faced with the stringent setbacks landscaping parking and building separation requirements, which you will see are addressed in the waivers provided before you this day. I was hired to help with this project in October of two thousand and eight. As I investigated the lot requirements, I found this lot to be very difficult to put any new building on it with reasonable square footage due to the new C-two setbacks. I also found out at this time, after speaking with staff review, found out about the six-month clause to be able to rebuild as a residential home, which, of course, I did try to find out if that could be extended at all, which found out that no one, also found out that this would be a very difficult lot to rezone back under any residential pretenses. Um, considering all that, considering all this, that is why I'm before you this day to request variances, special use permits, and waivers, so Mr. Nave may rebuild a proper mixed-use building. I would like to state that none of this had to happen if he was informed correctly originally of the right to build back residential home within six months of the fire damage. This is a very small lot to work with, although we meet majority of the requirements of city planning for landscaping, parking, et cetera. The waivers before you state what we do not meet as far as the city planning requires. Hope you will understand and consider Mr. Nave's hardship and approve the request before you this evening.
Thank you. The public hearing is open. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Please approach the mic and give your name for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. Dietrich Sanford, address three zero seven West Van Buren Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one zero six.
And Jackie Brantley, one three one seven, Manpass Circle, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Evening Commissioners, I just wanted to speak briefly on the, uh, the case at hand to say that we do, um, support staff's denial of the, uh, application, um, with seeing that, uh, our, our neighborhood is typically is residential, not looking to see, uh, a mixed-use come in, especially with a two-story, um, height. Um, hearing the story from the applicant this evening, um, we do definitely support a residential coming back into the area. Um, there are, uh, there's another house around the corner that actually was built, um, as a residential area, and we would definitely support the applicant, uh, this evening if, um, there is some remedy to be able to, uh, come to, uh, a single-story residential, um, application for this, for this parcel, but it's just not fit. Um, obviously, I've shared and spoke with some of the other neighbors, uh, and within the radius, and they also share the same interest of not having, um, the commercial use, uh, or the mixed-use, excuse me, especially with, um, all of the waivers, the setback, um, variances and whatnot, to show that, um, this property would really be adjacent to the neighbors, uh, to the east of it as well as, um, to the back. And so, we would do support staff's denial, um, but look forward to hopefully working with the applicant and the other neighbors, and being able to bring, uh, a successful residential product to our neighborhood.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you like to comment?
Yes, I'd like to support, uh, what Mr. Sanford had said, and also the fact that we've given this complete consideration in the neighborhood, and we certainly want to see redevelopment in this community, but we want it to be something that is, um, agreeable to the current residents in the area. And we, we are from the community and, uh, born and raised in the community, and we wouldn't like to see our neighborhood, uh, redeveloped as other neighborhoods are, but we also would like to see only one-story dwellings, because it certainly does take away from the historic, um, neighborhood aspects. So, we appreciate your attention to that as well.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll, uh, afford the applicant the opportunity to respond to those comments.
Yes, uh, you know, Mr. Nave would very much been, of course, would have loved to rebuild residential. That is why I read this statement to you, because he was not informed that he could have done so, and so now he is held under a C-two zoning, which whether they understand this or not, the majority of all their properties east, west, and south of them are also zoned C-two, even though it is zixed as a residential neighborhood. That was part of the argument that I established before staff review and, and, and everybody else is, why, you know, why all of a sudden, you know, does he have to build a mixed-use property? Well, 'cause he's zoned that. Well, so is everybody else down the street, but they live in a residential neighborhood. Mr. Nave would love to rebuild residential, but they won't let us rezone it or rebuild residential because of this six-month clause. So, um, and why we can't build two-story? Or why we're building two-stories? Because on a single-story format, we have less than seven hundred and fifty square feet to work with. Um, you put up a two-car garage, and you got less than three hundred and fifty square foot of house to put on these setbacks that are in front of him, um, with what would be twenty in the rear, ten on the sides, twenty and fifteen on street side. It gives him a seven hundred and fifty square foot footprint. Um, and so, the house that we, or the building that we have proposed is to look very residential, to keep in nature of the, the development or the existing residential neighborhoods. But to say it again, Mr. Nave would be more than happy if he had to, was given that opportunity to rebuild residential. Um, he's been told mixed-use is what he has to apply for, and that's why we're here tonight.
If, if I may.
I would, I would invite the, uh, filing director to, to respond to your observation.
In, in rereading the letter, um, the applicant's representative has made a, a clear representation of his, uh, client's wishes. It, it is not as clear in the letter, but that may well be based, as he indicated, on information that he was given. Uh, based on his statement this evening, uh, while obviously a delay is, is costly and, of course, time-consuming for the applicant, I would certainly be amenable to a thirty-day advance to allow staff to work with him on different options based on what he's indicating as his primary preference.
I think that's a, a reasonable, uh, recommendation, and I would certainly, uh, welcome that type of request from you.
Yes, very much.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask Director Wheeler about, um, this is one of these older areas, where if you look through there, there aren't a lot of C-twos. Has there, and I think, uh, a couple of years ago, there was an attempt to, to bring all of these in to some type of consistent conformance, be it, I think it would be more residential than C-two, but are there any discussions for this area to try to look at the C-two parcels that are scattered amongst here to, to, to kind of do what we did up around the Decatur Ranch area a few years ago?
Chairman and Commissioner, you're of course correct, and if you look at the zoning map, you'll see the variety of zonings. Um, because this property is immediately on Jackson Street is why, um, in my, my first glance at this, that the commercial is, uh, being held more strongly to Jackson Street having, um, commercial history, whereas the others, Monroe and Madison and Van Buren, not so much so. But again, based on, on the representation of the applicant, I think that it would be, um, certainly appropriate to give us a little more time to work with him and see if there are other options.
May I make one more comment?
Thank you. Please do.
Um, you know, the, Mr. Nave, you know, does have a, a business of what they, you know, what his wife partakes in and stuff. It's a travel business, and so, it's an in-home business that they can do, but as well as something that, of course, when this was presented to him, uh, is what his lot is capable of being used for, or needs to be used for, according to what he's been told, then, you know, he was like, well, that's fine, then, you know, I'll just pursue the opportunity to make it a mixed-use and, and create, you know, a business that, you know, you know, could be complementary to the development or not, but again, you know, it was mostly that, you know, he was put in this position by what he was told and, um, but yes, and so whatever you feel is necessary.
Yeah.
During, during that thirty-day period, though, I, I mean, I know you guys are gonna have discussions with staff, but, um, I will not support any type of business operation down there, because I think most of that needs to go Jackson Street, um, west of D Street. That's where your more commercial corridor of Jackson is. This area is residential, so I would hope that your conversation would be, how can you get this to somewhat residential at a one-story level that's compatible with what's surrounding there? So, just keep that in mind.
May I ask the board why, if I'm not mistaken, of why east of him, all the neighborhoods, east of him are zoned C-two?
Well, that's old, that's the old history of, of Las Vegas, way back in the fifties and, and back then, so I think that whole area needs to be looked at, and mostly all of those C-two lots over there somehow need to be cleaned up or rechanged into a residential zoning.
I brought, I brought that up to them.
For compatibility, so that's what your discussion's gonna be with, and, and good luck and work with staff.
Yeah. His lot is also cut in half, where the majority of those lots run from street to street, from north to south, and his is cut in half, which makes it much more tougher to have a, a proper footprint to be able to do anything with residential or commercial for that matter, you know. Very good.
Okay. So, do we need a motion to hold these items for thirty days? Is that?
Motion would be to hold it for thirty days for the applicant or for staff.
Twenty-six.
To two twenty, February twenty-sixth.
Items fifty-two, three, and four?
Correct.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Thank.
Thank you.
Thank you. Post? Thank you. Can we now move on to item number fifty-six? Fifty-six is, um, RQR thirty-one eight twenty-six. The applicant owner is Oxford Technology, Inc., required review for a forty-foot-tall, fourteen-by-forty-eight off-premise sign at twenty-three-ten Las Vegas Boulevard South. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff has found that there has been no final inspection of the subject billboard, and therefore is recommending denial. Please note, additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to clear the public hearing open and invite the applicant to comment.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Michael Querero, at fifty-five twenty-one Maggi Ranch Court, representing the application this evening. Um, after going over the, the conditions that were written up by staff, I have noticed that, uh, there were some, there were some comments written about, uh, the column having some graffiti on it, and, uh, also that there was some, uh, bird dropping along on the asphalt there. This, this evening, this, this afternoon, we did go out, this, let's see, we consider that. We had gone out there and we had, uh, painted up the column and cleaned it up rolling knives again, and the crew is out there as we speak right now to clean the asphalt and, and keep it up, and also in regard to the, uh, the mention of the, didn't have the final inspection. Since then, um, Shepco has moved their office to a different facility, so I apologize to that, and in addition to that, the owner of Shepco Outdoor has been deceased, so there may be some misconception of where those permits went, uh, the final inspection permits are. If they don't have them, they're gonna go back and research files and see if we can obtain them, or we would be more than happy to comply and, and refile for a final inspection. With that, I'd like to, uh, recommend that you make a, an approval for this application. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. The public hearing is open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and then turn the matter over to the planning commission for discussion of possible motion. Uh, Vice Chairman Truesdale has, um, closed himself on this particular item, so.
Yes, I understand.
Thank you.
How soon, you said that bottom picture depicts that it's, I can't really see, it's clean now?
The, as, as we're speaking, the crew has been out there, and I don't, I'm not sure if they're still there right now, but they were out there this evening, but they didn't surprise with a photo, but they did clean it up, uh, this evening, and I can provide, uh, proof of that at a later time, if you'd wish.
How often they clean that? Every time we, you know, you're coming before for review?
Well, this is the first time that has come to our attention, and in addition to this, we're prepared to put, uh, what we call skirting, uh, underneath the billboard, which would not allow that to hit the ground and look like that anymore. It would capture the bird dropping.
Thank you. If I'm not mistaken, this is in the area where, uh, the neon, or the signs down there are supposed to have a certain percentage of neon?
Um.
Maybe that's a question more appropriate for staff?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, and also, if I'm not mistaken, there's an embellishment, uh, to this particular sign that exceeds what is typically permissible?
Uh, I don't, I don't see any embellishment on there. It looks like a standard fourteen-by-forty-eight to me.
If I may, we, since we receive no plans nor application in response to our notification, we are working at, um, a disadvantage, if I may. Has the applicant submitted the application and the fees as of this time?
Uh, again, you know, I'd like to apologize, 'cause I don't know for, for certain, but, uh, they have moved their office, and then, uh, the owner of the company is now deceased, so something may have happened there. I'm not, I can't even say that they did not apply, or I don't know, but if they had not applied, would be more than happy to come back and apply for the final inspection. That's what's lacking at, right here. They do have the permits to, to be there, they had been there for a number of years, but if that is the case, if we search our files and cannot find it, we'd be more than happy to, to come back and, uh, do the final inspection, the Western Technology QA.
It, it sounds like we're, um, being asked to approve something where no one's really sure what, what exists, so I, I think.
Well, it's more, I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to butt in, but it's more just the final inspection of how the billboard was built, the structure. Is it safe now? And it has been there for a number of years, so I guess that does prove that it is safe.
Okay, but we, we've got an application, uh, which caused staff to have concerns about, uh, embellishments that may or may not be there. There's an absolute concern regarding the absence of the required neon, and so I think that, uh, somewhere between those three issues, the final inspection, the application, and the, how we're going to address the issue of the neon, I think we're, we're here prematurely.
Okay, these photos have been taken the, today, and I'm, I'm looking at the photo right now, and I don't see any neon, and I do not see any embellishment that's on the board. It looks like a, just a standard, straight fourteen-by-forty-eight, uh, billboard.
Right, with no neon.
I don't see any neon on the billboard.
I know, that's the point. There's a requirement that there is neon in that area.
Okay.
It's part of the historical, it's a, it's a look that they're trying to create.
In the surrounding area?
Right.
Yes, and we're here for the billboard today. That's what we're here for.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we're not communicating. The billboard requires a certain amount of neon on it.
Um, okay. Mr. Chairman? Down here to your left. It seems to me that unless the staff has done their inspection, then we're really not, as you say, ready to, uh, move on this, so.
Well, if I may, our inspection in the staff report dated January fifth indicated that the, the graffiti and the bird deterrent, uh, the deterrent devices are not there, and the paint problem, also the lack of a final, and that it is located within the, um, scenic byway, and therefore the recommendation for denial. The applicant would be required, um, to get the applicant, what, in the past, on these required reviews, what would occur, and several members of the commission are aware of this, that on these required reviews, we would send out notice after notice after notice, and when they did not come in, then unfortunately, they would often get lost. Now, we place them on the agenda regardless of if we get that fee, so that these don't get lost, because these required reviews are, are, as we say, required by the council. In this case, we did do the inspection, we indicated all of these things that were both, um, substandard with regard to the sign, and then there's also the issue of not yet having the application or the fee. Um, it is the issues with regard to the sign itself as to why staff is recommending denial of the required review.
So, let me ask the applicant then, are you, have you read the conditions?
Yes, I have.
And are you able to meet those conditions?
Well, I just read the conditions today, and yes, we have, we were able to go out there and paint the column, as you can see in the photo here, so the column is nice and cleaned up and looks very appropri, appropriate.
What, what about the payment of the required application, the notification fee totaling eight hundred dollars and the applicable documents within ten days of the city council? And also, number five, the bird deterrent devices shall be installed on the sign within thirty days of, of final approval by the city of Las Vegas. Are you ready to meet those conditions?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay, so we ready for a motion?
Yeah. Um, let me ask Director Wheeler, this is a, a review, it, um, does it say when this will come back again?
It would be, what's recommended would be two, two thousand and twelve, so in three years, which is the minimum required, uh, minimum allowed by current code.
Okay, and there are triggers built in for condition number two, with, with, which means if he goes to the eleventh day, um, he knows that he did not meet, meet the condition, and after the thirty-first day on item condition number five, if there's no device installed, what happens at that point?
We do carefully follow up, and if there continues to be a problem, it can be brought back forward for another review.
Thank you. No further questions, um, I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval of RQR three-one-eight-two-six, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Motion's been made. Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post? Motion carries?
And it goes forward to city council on February eighteenth.
Thank you very much.
Can we move on to item number fifty-seven, which is special use permit thirty-two four-ninety? The applicant is Cash America International, Inc., owner is Cheyenne Fairways Business Center, for proposed five thousand square foot pawn shop with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from residentially zoned property where two hundred feet is the minimum distance required at eighty-six eighty West Cheyenne Avenue. Uh, staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, as the proposed pawn shop fails to comply with the minimum special use permit requirements of Title Nineteen oh four, staff cannot support this application, and therefore is recommend, uh, recommending denial of this application. Please note, additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to clear the public hearing open and ask the applicant to speak, please.
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, three-eight-hundred Howard Hughes Parkway, here tonight representing the applicant. Uh, this is an existing retail and office, uh, center that is located on Cheyenne, a little west of Durango. By way of background, uh, this particular applicant is actually relocating, um, an existing license. By your city of Las Vegas Business License Code, you regulate the number of these types of licenses based upon population, so this is not adding an additional license to, uh, the number of licenses that the city currently has out there for this type of use. It is a relocation of an existing license that we are proposing at this particular location. The application before you is for a special use permit for this use. It would be located in Building A, uh, right here. The waiver that we're seeking is for the two hundred-foot, uh, separation between, uh, this use and the residential. This is the residential right here. Uh, the way your code is written, you have to measure between uses by property aligned to property line, and the property line for this commercial. And the property line for this commercial center is actually right adjacent to where the property line is or the block wall is that separates this residential development from this commercial shopping center. So that's the reason why it reads in your staff report that we are requesting a zero-foot separation where two hundred is required. Just by way of example, you can actually, as you see on the site plan, see that if the code was written differently or took into account the building or the door, from this property line to the edge of the building, it's just about one hundred and forty-nine feet. If you were actually to go to the entrance to the door that we would be proposing for the use, we're just over two hundred feet at about two hundred and three feet. In between the building and this block wall is an existing Las Vegas Valley Water District well, and then you've got some additional landscaping, and then, of course, you've got the building. The building has already been constructed, if any of you have driven out there. This actually...this entire shopping center has been constructed with the two-story office building along the north edge and then two of these retail pads out in front. That gives you an idea of what the building looks like as we sit there today. So the reason why I think that's important to point out is there would be no surprises in terms of what the building would look like when it was actually built. The building is already there. We're just simply proposing to go inside and actually put this use inside of there. I think it's also important to note that Super Pawn intends to spend half a million dollars in tenant improvements on the inside. If any of you have ever been into any of their locations, you'll know that they're very clean, they're very well lit, and they actually function as a retail use in a lot of ways. They are located in areas where I think for a long time, people thought these types of uses were more downtown, but they're actually all over the valley. I live by one over in Henderson, which is on Horizon Ridge and Eastern, and there is also another location in the city, just to give you an idea. This is a city location, City of Las Vegas location. It is on seven zero nine five North Durango Road, and as you can see, there is some residential behind that. But the idea in pointing that out to you is, again, to kind of point out that this is, again, more of a retail use that I do think functions in various parts of the city and has been proven in very, very attractive buildings. Now, you might say, well, why this particular location? Why would this location be someplace that this operator would like to use? If you can zoom in on that for a second. Thank you. This...perfect. Thanks. This pink diamond right here is the proposed location. But what's more important is all of the blue dots are actually customers of Super Pawn. So it does show that there are a number of customers that use Super Pawn operations out in this area of town. If you zoom up just a little bit, or if you can kind of pan, that'd be great, you get an idea for how many customers we do have out in this area. As I indicated before, since this does function more as a retail, I want to emphasize that this is not a twenty-four-hour use. It is absolutely not a twenty-four-hour use. The hours of operation would be Monday through Saturday, nine a.m. to seven p.m., and then on Sunday from noon to five p.m. This location, again, as I pointed out, we think is an appropriate location. We did have a neighborhood meeting. One was not required, but we did have a neighborhood meeting on January twelfth. Two people did come. They expressed objections, as are noted in your staff report, and with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance that wishes to speak on this matter?
Good evening. Diane McCarthy speaking for thirty-two ten Epsom Street. I hope I have the right item number because the map she showed looked like it was east of ninety-five. I...maybe I'm just missing something here, but all those blue dots look like they were east of ninety-five, so maybe someone could clarify that for me. I'm speaking here to let you know that the history of this property, which is like she had said, if that was the correct...on the earlier map she'd shown. Initially, the city had the whole property for the Durango Hills Golf Club, and all the subsequent decisions from the last almost eleven years up to May two thousand nine, back eleven years, have taken those uses away to the point where at this...they want to take a two-hundred variance down to a zero, and it made...I'm sure they're not aware of it, and I'm sure they're good faith and integrity of purpose, but these people who had bought this almost eleven years ago had paid a premium to get the view for the golf course, which has been diminishing since then. And it just strikes me as shocking that these very honest families, working very hard, have to endure yet another eyesore, more construction, which they've been dealing with for so long. We've probably dealt with this for so long, and it just...these homes, it's a nice little family residential complex, and my daughter does her Halloween, you know, trick-or-treating there, and there's a little pool on one end and a nice little walkway around, and it was intended as...I mean, she's right, there isn't a pawn shop there, and there shouldn't be one there. I mean, and if people are doing fine before, they surely didn't, you know, advocate and call for this pawn shop to come there. They were doing fine before. So it's just not what it was intended to for these...all these residents for all this time, and it's just shocking that...I'd never even heard of going from two hundred feet down to zero. And what they're going to do further with that allowance, who can tell? I mean, it's just a grievance. And with...the last point I should make is with the foreclosures and the property and everything going down, the fact that the...these...I don't know what will happen to property value, and people are already losing so much, and I don't see why we can't take all these families in this whole complex, American West Village, into account who are directly adjacent to this property. So please hold that in consideration.
What's your address again, ma'am?
Thirty-two ten Epsom.
Got you.
If she could show that map again, because it looks to me like ninety-five going...I mean, I'm not the best map person in the world, but going northwest. All the blue dots are on the east. This is the correct map, yeah, because that's right there, but she's showing all the blue dots with, you know, the services from going there, and that's the one I question, not this one.
We'll try to clarify it for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, she's getting ready to come show us the blue map. Again, I would comment that we're not talking about any new construction here. We're not talking about any zone change. It's tenant improvements. Those are the kinds of things that go on inside the building. The existing building with its tenant improvements would have no impact at all on the golf course, and the two-hundred feet to zero is simply a recognition that the property lines abut one another. And the actual businesses, if they were to measure from the front door of the business that's being proposed to the edge of the residential, that's the backyard wall, it's the two-hundred and four feet or something. Some zoning measures front door to front door. If that were the case, it'd be closer to two seventy-five or three hundred feet, you know, and it's...also, there's a major improvement between this existing structure and any home or the walls that separate the zone change. Here's the rendering. Now, where are we again?
Okay, just to orient you, this pink diamond right here, that represents Cheyenne. This represents Durango, and I apologize if I did. This is ninety-five over here, and then this is the two fifteen.
So it's well west of ninety-five.
Right, so that...yeah, I'm sorry if I had it upside down.
Thank you.
Anyone else in attendance?
Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I think one of the things that we all probably live with, and that is that these pawn shops really are more and more of a retail use. You do see them all over the valley, and the building is...it's a great-looking building. The...one of the things that concerns me is the signage for the building. But I guess other than the signage, the kind of glaring big Super Pawn sign, you know, payday loans, that it's basically a retail use, and so I'm less concerned about the use than some of the signage.
I'm inclined to agree with you. Do you have any renderings that would show the typical signage associated with a Cash America?
Well, yes, while I...let me just show you...let me show you this first, and then I can pull out a typical sign package. But this is, again, the location that's on Durango in the City of Las Vegas, and typically what you see, of course, is the name, and then it says Jewelry Center and Payday Advance. I understand Commissioner Buckley's concern, I think, is perhaps more with perhaps the uses...the signage for payday advance. The signage that I can't get rid of is the part that says Super Pawn. I need to keep that part of it, and I don't think that Jewelry Center is offensive in any way. They do have very nice jewelry, I can tell you that, but I can understand if there would be some hesitation with signage that read payday advance. So if that was a concern to the commission, we would agree to no signage on the building that referenced payday...payday advance.
And also, Ms. Lazovich, will you confirm that although you will be taking in guns at this location, you will not be selling guns from this location? And what will happen to those guns that go to this location?
Yes, we actually work extremely, extremely close with Metro, and Metro...we developed a relationship with them such that actually it's good to have a location where you can take guns. We do not take any ammunition, absolutely none. The gun cannot come in with ammunition, number one. It also, number two, has to have a safety lock on it. Number three, once it is taken in, it goes into the back area of the store in a locked location, so that no one can get to it, and it is never sold at any of these locations and certainly not at the location that's before you tonight. That is...that's just not what we do. Then there's a process with running the serial number with Metro, which is what Metro wants us to do, so they can make sure if the gun is stolen, that they can confiscate it, and obviously, if it's not, then that's a completely different thing. But I think it's important to know those two things. While it would come in, it comes in with no ammunition and a safety lock. It is locked up, and it will not be sold out of this location.
And also, do you have a security guard on the property, like inside the store, or is it just a regular surveillance type of system, camera?
Actually, what they do...this is, again, in working with Metro. In working with them, we've...they've actually told us that a large number of crimes that occur in retail centers in general, okay, retail centers in general, are actually...can be solved by the camera on an ATM machine, not because necessarily the ATM machine is being robbed, but because it can see the parking lot beyond if something occurred in the parking lot, and they can get a lot of clues that way. So in working with Metro, what we've started to do on all of our locations, and this too will have one, is install cameras on the outside of the building.
My point was exactly that it almost, to me, increases the security in the surrounding area.
It does, yes.
So I don't want to drag it on, but it was something that I just thought of personally when I was thinking about it, so thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I will move for approval of this with the subject to staff conditions and also the further condition that the payday advance sign not be included.
If I may, check with the attorney, the content of the wording of the signage?
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Mr. Chairman?
Please. I'm sorry.
Thanks. Generally speaking...
I've never heard an attorney wait for someone to give him permission to speak.
Well, this attorney works for the government. And you woke me up, thank you. Anyway, generally speaking, this attorney will give this commission, the city council, advice that the Constitution does not allow us to regulate content. However, if an applicant volunteers to remove language, then we will advise you that's perfectly acceptable as a condition. But generally speaking, as we've told you many times in the past, if you require content to be removed, it's likely that you will find the city before one of our federal jurists on a constitutional plan.
I can state on behalf of the applicant, we'll agree if that makes it...if I can create the record to make it very, very clear that we are proposing to not have any signage on any of the elevations of the building that will say payday advance. Perhaps that puts the burden on us.
In that case, I believe I've heard three conditions. One, the no exterior signage regarding payday advance, that the hours of operation shall be Monday through Saturday, nine a.m. to seven p.m., and Sunday noon to five, and that there will be no gun sales from this facility.
Correct.
Right, that's great, and I would make that motion. And the applicant is in agreement?
Yes, I am in agreement with those additional conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes.
This will go to council, February eighteenth.
Great, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
We now move on to item number fifty-eight, which is special use permit thirty-two four ninety-one. The applicant is Astoria LLC. The owner is Buffalo, Washington, three...the Third LLC for a proposed beer wine cooler on-sale establishment in conjunction with an existing restaurant with a waiver to allow a fifty-eight-foot distance separation from a city park where four hundred is required at seventy-five ninety-one West Washington Avenue, suite number one ten. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use fails to comply with the minimum distance requirements as set forth by Title nineteen point oh four, as it is within four hundred feet of a city park. Staff is therefore recommending denial of this application. Please note additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open now and invite the applicant to comment.
Yeah, hello, Marcus Skidzy, anyone fifteen Desert Cloud Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. This is another restaurant for me. I've had several...some people already know me as Chef Mark, and this will be a location that will be ideal for what I'm trying to do there, is a pastoria and deli, and of course, we're going to serve beer and wine. We're trying to get that. And we're pretty far away from the park, but if you go from, like the last applicant said, from curb, the edge of our parking lot to where the park is, but there's a pretty big road between us and another road is...we're up against Summerlin Parkway, and my reputation is to sell food mostly, and the wine goes with the food. I don't sell it, you know, any cheap wine or anything like that. It's just to go along with some really good food, and I've always had a good reputation for doing that.
Bring any samples?
I have some, but they've all spent so long now, they all got bad in the car.
Someone ate them.
Yeah.
Okay. The public hearing is open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Seeing none, I'll go ahead and make a motion on item fifty-eight, move for approval of SUP three-two four-nine-one, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Motion carries?
And that goes forward to council, February eighteenth.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We now move to item number fifty-nine, which is special use permit thirty-two four ninety-two. The applicant owner is My Charleston Plaza LLC for a proposed packaged liquor off-sale establishment at fifty-one hundred West Charleston Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this application requires no waivers. Staff finds that the use can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious nature within the area and recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional protests on this item.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open and invite anyone in attendance that wishes to speak come forward. First is the applicant.
Yeah, my name is David Levy. I'm the owner of the property, and really, I have nothing to say if it's all recommended. Just thank you.
You would accept the recommendations subject to all staff conditions?
Yes, of course.
Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Seeing no one, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
I'd like to make a motion for approval with all staff's recommendations of SUP three-two four-nine-two, and I wish you good luck, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Mr. Rankin, what were the nature of those additional protests?
It is in...I'll speak for Mr. Rankin because I just read them.
Or because you're the boss?
It's in your package. There's one that indicates that there are teenagers in the area and has concerns. The other ones did not state an actual reason, merely checked the boxes and returned them to us.
Thank you.
My motion stands.
Motion's been made for approval. Please cast your votes. Post? Motion carries?
That goes forward to counsel on February 18th.
Thank you.
We can now move to item number 60, which is site development review 32482. The applicant Harmony Homes. The owner is Heighton Springs LLC and Centennial Meadows LLC. A major amendment to an approved site development plan review for revised single-family residential floor plans and building elevations on 193 lots at the southwest corner of Farm Road and Tulley Springs Road. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed revisions of the previous approved building elevations will precipitate a significant loss in articulation and architectural detail, and in turn will create a disharmonious and aesthetically unpleasing environment when put in contrast with the existing homes in the development. Therefore, staff has recommended denial. Please note additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Good evening, Laura Dreya.
Let me, let me, let me do my bureaucratic thing here. I'd like to open the public, the public hearing portion and invite anyone in attendance that wishes to speak on the matter to come forward, and I'll give the applicant the first opportunity. Ma'am?
Thank you. Good evening, Laura Dreya, with the offices of Jay Brown, 520 South 4th Street. I'm here with John Rhodes, who is representing Harmony Homes on this matter, as well as Craig Smith, who is representing R&amp;M Architecture. Before I ask Mr. Rhodes to discuss the history of the site and his proposal, I would like the commission to note once more that, for the most part, the site is fully developed in terms of the offsites, the roadways, the sidewalks, and the utilities, so this is primarily an architectural review, although it is listed as a site development plan review. John?
Good evening, commissioners. John Rhodes, 4730 Fort Apache, representing the applicant. We're coming before you to ask for approval of architectural plans to go on this project. As you're probably quite aware, this project has been out for some time and was approved in 2004. Since that time, it has been in the hands of three different builders who have not been able to bring this project for different reasons forward. And as you can see in the picture on your screen, it's left a lot of half-finished homes that have been vandalized and graffitied. We propose to take this project over. Because we do not own the plans, we've recreated plans for this project. We have stayed with Spanish Colonial and with the Craftsman, which are two of the four different elevations that were proposed in the original plans by the original developer of the plan. We have four different floor sizes that go from 1817 feet to 2708. They are three- and four-bedroom homes with two and a half bath, and you will have a total of eight different elevations that are available in this plan. We have used cantilevering and overhangs to add articulation. We've met all of the porch requirements that are required in this development, and we ask that you'll consider approving this plan. I did bring the architect of record for these, in case you have any questions for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible action. I do need to disclose that I was handed a copy of a, of a letter before the start of the meeting that brings up an issue that I don't believe it's appropriate for the city to get involved in, but I do think that you need to be aware of it, and that is, I'll just give, read a sentence. "Person to our purchase agreement as it pertains to the residential lots, the home builder is contractually obligated to submit all planned changes for our review as master planners to ensure consistency with the original concept for the community. To date, we have not received any information regarding the proposed changes."
I can address that really quick? I did...
Just giving you a heads up.
Sure, I appreciate that. I have checked with some other sides that have told they're not so sure that's true. However, I did send copies of these plans to Washington, where these people are, who are the original owners of the project, who have sold off all of the lots originally, and then they've changed hands a couple of times. But in our phone conversations, after they looked at them, they said they did not see any problems with the current plans.
Thank you.
And gave me permission to let the council know that.
Thank you.
By the commission.
Any other points?
You know, the applicant has, you know, brought forth some issues that this development is well-planned and is well-intended, the retail street, the park is complete, and I believe the existing homes haven't sold.
That, that is correct. There's 18 partially built, partially completed homes. None of those have been sold, closed, or occupied. And again, you can see kind of the relics of that on the screen here from staff photos that show partially completed homes, and as you drive through the neighborhood, you'll see a lot of broken windows. As we've taken on this project, we have gone in, we've already repaired a lot of the windows, we've touched up paint or repainted homes that appropriately needed that because of the graffiti and vandalism that has occurred, because there's been no activity on this site for so long. So, I agree with you, it's a well-planned-out project for a sundry of reasons, never really went through, and we feel like we can take it through and really have a nice development here.
And as much as the, what we originally approved had quite a bit of technical detail on the houses and, and obviously, not well-received, and as much as what you're submitting is somewhat more minimalist, minimalistic, as opposed to what we originally... I think completion of this project creates greater value for that area, and is, is very important for the city to look at this, and the fact that there are no, you know, waivers with this, you're not moving the buildings around, you're not making changes that would, that's drastically changed the grid of the streets and the densities and all of those. If there are no other comments, I'd make a motion for approval, so the staff says this for approved conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion carries, I believe? Yes, motion carries?
That goes forward to counsel on February 18th.
Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes, I had a quick question.
Yes.
Right here. Those 18 that you're going to redo...
Yes.
Are they going to all be one color, or are they going to continue with the different color palette that was there originally?
They're going to be, they're not going to all be the same color.
Okay.
But they're not going to be all, all of the colors within that color palette. We're going to stay more with the colors that are in that palette that are more consistent with the desert tones.
Aesthetically unique.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Dreweth, Dreweth, these folks and Dr. Rhodes, but I still, in regards to this project, I think it's, has nothing to do with you, your excuse, thank you. But this, this project came to us originally as a mixed-use project, and this, to me, is a good lesson learned. We permitted the commercial, the park, and all this to get built. I think if I recall correctly, there were waivers to parking standards because the people were going to have access to the, to the commercial, or maybe it was the waivers were at the commercial side because they were going to have so many of the people that were going to be using the commercial, were going to be residents of the, of the homes, and it was going to be a walk-up type of a commercial deal, and none of it panned out. And I don't know what we're going to do.
Mr. Chairman, you bring forward an excellent point, and you may recall that it's almost two years now, we had a mixed-use text amendment that we brought forward, it got through the planning commission and got stalled at the council level, and just today, we're putting that back on the schedule to bring that forward because there's flaws in, in the way the current code is written with regard to mixed use.
Thank you very much. Now, we can move on to item number, number 62. Item number 62 is a citizen's participation.
I was wondering, that letter that you referred to... I'm sorry. Just come back up to the mic, name and address again.
John Rhodes, 4730 Fort Apache. The letter that you referred to during our discussion, is a copy of that available to us?
I just threw it in the trash. I'll, I'll get you after the meeting, I'll, I'll let you see it.
Did you get it from the clerk?
No, no, I didn't.
He just stuck it there, he's going to give it to the clerk.
I put it in a circular file.
I'm sorry to bring that up. Did you see how this government...
Thank you.
Did you see how this government lawyer's looking at you now?
I'll take care of you, hang, hang. The item number 62 is the citizen's participation. "The public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited." Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and adjourn to this evening's meeting. Thank you very much. Good night.